Okay. So before we actually call the meeting to order, which will not happen until we have some beautiful warm-up acts here in Democracy Town, I'd like to invite Mike Merwicki to come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about what he's been doing in Montpelier for us. Mike?
Sure. Thank you. Can you hear me? I'm so used to being on Zoom and I start talking and people start saying, "You're muted. You have to unmute yourself." Well, we're not muted now and it is so good to be back in town. It's great to be back here at town meeting and to see so many familiar faces. You might have seen as you came in, we have a special visitor here, Mike Pichak. Our state treasurer is visiting towns. And if you have any questions, hopefully not about COVID, although Mike did a great job getting us information and keeping us updated on COVID. Just want to share that Mike is a local guy. His parents grew up in Brattleboro, I mean, he grew up in Brattleboro. And Mike grew up in what we call a mixed political family. And as Mike announced his candidacy for state treasurer, he turned to his parents and said, "I hope this is going to be the first election you don't split your vote." Well, glad to see you here, Mike. And he's already doing some great work for us here. Well, up in Montpelier, we are halfway home. Your part-time legislature has an 18-week session. We're at nine weeks. And we are off to a good start. I can share that especially in contrast to the U.S. House of Representatives, we are doing our business in an orderly fashion. It took the Vermont House 12 minutes to nominate and elect our speaker, Jill Crowinsky, in contrast to the debacle. And I'd like to think that it's going to be a harbinger of what we do as we keep going along. So we're halfway through the session and what that means is that we're close to the crossover part where bills have to cross over. And House bills go to the Senate and vice versa. Among our priorities this year are family-friendly policies like paid family and medical leave and a major reform in our childcare payment and delivery system. Climate change, of course, is a constant cloud over our planet and we're working on bills that include the Affordable Heat Plan, which focuses on four fundamental goals: climate accountability, equity and access requires the majority of clean heat benefits to go to lower and middle-income Vermonters, affordability, cutting costs, and feasibility to offer a practical blueprint for transition away from the volatile costs of fossil fuels and 19th-century heating technology. Now, as the bills are being voted on, you may be hearing from your fossil fuel companies already and they're spinning how this is the worst thing to happen for Vermont, but they want to keep the status quo, which is heating oil $2 a gallon more than it was last year, gasoline prices going up and down, and if you drive a truck, diesel is still around $5 a gallon. I'm not sure, Eric, what are you paying for diesel? Yeah, too much. Our economy is also challenged right now by ongoing workforce issues. Those challenges include housing and childcare, and they're connected. We know that a lot of women left the workforce because of the lack of childcare and they're not coming back because it's too expensive. So we're working hard on that. The legislature is working on housing by infusing more dollars into the public housing sector and also looking to relax regulatory barriers that inhabit housing growth, especially in downtowns and villages, to better use resources, promote less car use, and especially prevent sprawl. With childcare, we're also infusing more dollars to support both parents so childcare is accessible and affordable and so the teachers are paid a livable wage so that we have experienced teachers providing quality early care and education. We also know that the work is ongoing to address the systemic discrimination against women and people of color. And I support the ongoing work of the Vermont Women's Commission and I'm a founding member of the Vermont Legislative Racial and Social Equity Caucus. So a big thank you to Vermont voters who overwhelmingly approved the constitutional amendment last November that cleaned up the language in regards to slavery. And another big thank you to voters who resoundingly approved the constitutional amendment on reproductive liberty. We are clear that Vermont needs to be a leader in moving away from what states in Texas and Arkansas and Ohio are trying to do to take rights away from women. We're now also taking the steps to pass a shield law that will protect Vermont medical providers who serve out-of-state citizens who are now coming to Vermont for care that they cannot access in their home state. These are some of the highlights and a full report you can find online at my website and it's on the informational page that I shared with you. I want to close with two things. First of all, your state senator, Nada Hashim, wanted to be here. And yesterday, he tested positive for COVID. So he felt the best thing to do is not come here, but he's going to have a report that's going to be online as well, too. And I just can share that he's doing great work for you in the Senate. I want to close with a recent experience that I had right here at the school. And I see our principals around here somewhere. Has everybody met our new principal, John Sessions, here? So I was visiting the eighth grade and we're trying to organize a school trip to the state house and I'd like to come visit classrooms. And we had a really wonderful and lively discussion. And at one point, the question came up that reinforced what a good job is happening here. When a student asked, "Are you going to ban books here like they're doing in other states?" What a great question from an eighth grader. I said, "No, we don't do that. That's not what we do in Vermont." And I said, "Anybody who writes, anybody who thinks that they can hide information from tech-savvy students these days is only fooling themselves. Banning books or giving a false whitewashed story of U.S. history is not the solution to the problems that we're finding ourselves dealing with now. But good education is one of those things and it's happening right here. Our parents, our students, our staff have created an envelope that fosters creative thinking, critical thinking, and asking tough questions like that. So I want to thank John and all the staff here for doing an amazing work to help our students become the future of Vermont. And I want to thank you all for the honor to serve and for helping keep Putney the best place I know to live, work, and raise a family and to keep Vermont the best place I know to live, work, and raise a family. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike Merwicki. And we're hoping that Wendy Harrison will be coming in later and we'll squeeze her in with your permission while we're actually conducting our business. Mike mentioned our new principal, John Sessions, and I wanted to give him a chance with your permission. He's not a Putney resident, so hearing no objections, I'd like to invite John Sessions to the mic.
Okay. Thanks, Meg. And thanks, everybody. And I'll say I'm not a Putney resident yet, so just to clarify. Thanks so much. It's truly an honor to be here at my first Putney Town meeting and nice to get the chance to meet many of you in the crowd, some for the first time, some not for the first time. But first, I just want to extend a deep feeling of gratitude to the whole Putney community. You know, this is my first year here at Putney Central School and without exception, people have been incredibly gracious and welcoming to the community. One of the things that I talk about a lot is the reason why I'm here and the reason why I was interested in this job in Putney is the connection between the school and community is really at the core of what I believe in education and a vision that it truly takes a community to raise children, to be engaged thoughtful citizens, to sort of feed communities in a positive direction. And Putney really embodies that in so many ways. And so I'm incredibly grateful for the support of our school and the support of all of us here at Putney Central School. So thank you. There's a funny story in my family where I grew up in Addison County, Vermont, but I had strong connections to Putney growing up through family friends who are here today. And the running joke in my family is I'd get frustrated at my parents, as we all do sometimes, and I'd say, "You know, the day I turn 18, I am out of here and I'm moving to Putney." And that's, and so here I am, you know, some 20 something years later. And it's funny how that works. Thank you. And I don't want to take up too much time, but as Mike mentioned, there's a lot of incredibly exciting things happening here at Putney Central School. It's truly an honor to watch our remarkable group of teachers and staff sort of engage with students every day. You know, we have 180 students who come to school here every day and the level of excitement and energy that resonates through this building is truly remarkable to see. And that's all due to the staff and remarkable teachers that come here every day and give so much to the school community. Specifically today, I want to recognize a couple folks who have a lot to do with getting this set up. Steve Napoli, who's our facilities manager, who is not here right now, he had to step out, but he spent a whole day sort of getting this place arranged and organized for us with the help of Tony Coven, who's here to my right. So thank you, Tony. I have to acknowledge the kitchen crew. So Steve Head and Ariane are our two primary kitchen staff with the help of Carrie Harlow in there, who's done a lot of work preparing lunch that will be coming today, along with Nancy Gagnon, who's here in the back. Nancy has done a lot of work in every way here, but also preparing lunch and getting things ready. So thank you, Nancy. Also, just two things I want to highlight. We have a truly remarkable group of eighth-grade students, who are, many of whom are in the back there waving their hands. You could not imagine a more sort of deeply committed, thoughtful, truly remarkable group of young people. And they are planning their own eighth-grade end-of-the-year trip down to Cape Cod. And so they've organized a bake sale back there as a fundraiser for that event. So please visit the bake sale. The last thing I'll say is that we were just in the beginning phases of a grounds renovation project, so sort of redesigning and re-envisioning the grounds all around the school, including the playground. And so we truly recognize that PCS is a community resource and that it's not just for students who go here, right? It's really a Putney resource. And so we're soliciting input from all folks around Putney, around what they love about the grounds now, what they hope that we keep in mind as we engage in design and redevelopment of the playground, but also sort of the fields and the orchard and the gardens and things like that. So there's a table in the back there with the survey in which you can share your opinion. And this will be a multi-year process and so you'll hear more about that as we go along. It's an exciting thing on the docket. I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, John. Okay, we're getting closer and closer to these articles, but first, there are two very important people I wish to invite onto the stage, also not Putney residents. So hearing no objections, I'd like to invite Karen Astley, our town manager, and Kim Monroe, our assistant town clerk. And once they get seated, I was going to ask the select board if they would, because out of curiosity, are there any people here that this is their first Putney Town meeting? Oh, oh, we see, yes. Very exciting, super exciting. I love it. So in the interest of wanting to let people know who their people are here on the stage who are working for them most of the year, can we start at the far end and just introduce yourself and a few brief facts?
Can you hear me? I'm Charlie Robicek. I live on West Hill Road in Putney. This is my maiden voyage on the Select Board. I certainly appreciate all of you who voted for me. I'm a retired attorney and I'm learning my way, thanks to all of us here on the dais. And I welcome the opportunity to be here and share the meeting with you.
Is there somebody else here, another creature?
So I'm Karen Astley, your town manager, zoning administrator, finance director, delinquent tax collector, and by default, road commissioner. So I've been in this position, it'll be five years on March 18th, and I reside in New Fane, Vermont. And I just want to say thank you to Putney for all of your support. And this is, you know, a process. And the more people we can have engaged, it helps me and our staff. So thank you very much.
I'm Eileen Shute. I am the chair of the Select Board at the moment. We moved here, I think, in 2017. My entire family is in the room, including my eighth grader, who is eagerly awaiting your patronage so that they can go on their class trip. And I'm really glad to see you all today. This is awesome.
I'm new to this, sorry. But I know many of you. I'm Josh Lachlan. I am finishing 17 years on the Select Board today. Thank you. And I just want to say, you know, it's been an amazing experience and I encourage those who haven't been involved in community work to get involved. We have opportunities right now. I would say perhaps my only regret about stepping down in this moment is the fact that there are opportunities for Putney right now due to just having completed the Our Future Putney program, ARPA money that's available to us, and large amounts of federal money and state money that is going to be available. There are huge opportunities for the town and I think it's really important that we all as a community step up and take advantage of all of those opportunities as much as possible because they are there for us to be able to take advantage of. But that takes dedication and people to really put the effort in to do that. So I encourage everybody who's interested to get involved in town stuff now because it's an exciting moment for us. But thank you all. It's been a good run and I look forward to seeing you all around town. And I can have say what I want at a Select Board meeting from now on, so you'll probably hear more from me.
Hi, everybody. I'm Peg Alden. I was voted in with Charlie when we expanded the Select Board from three to five members. So I too am one of the newbies on the Select Board. It's been an amazing year. It's fascinating what goes on. I encourage you all to participate in any way that you can. I am, I don't know how long I've lived in Putney, 35 years or something like that. I have spent most of my professional life working at Landmark College, had a kid, go through Putney Central, and I live in downtown, in the downtown Putney, right smack dab in the village. So I'm glad to see you all here.
Hello. My name's Eric McGowan, first year on the Select Board, I'm the clerk. Born and raised here in Putney. I run a business. I know quite a few of you people. And I enjoy seeing everybody here and excited to continue my time on the Select Board.
And Kim?
Hi, I'm Kim Monroe. I'm coming up on five years as assistant clerk and a year ago, I also became assistant treasurer.
And I'm going to go back to Karen just for a moment because she has a couple other people she wishes to introduce.
I also want to recognize two people that are in the room with us today. John Johnson, our town clerk. He's in the back. He also has been with us for five years. And our administrative assistant slash treasurer, Cassandra Berg, over here. And I also want to recognize our highway department, Brian Harlow, Jason Newton, Alan Skip Thurber, Lenny Howard III, and Patrick Wood. Those guys are amazing and without them, I'd have my hands fall. Okay? So honestly, I really appreciate that crew and they totally work very hard for this town. So when they're out and about, thank them. One other person is Tom Goddard, our fire chief. He wears many hats as well. He is our state construction permit inspector, our emergency management director, and several other hats. And he has a crew of approximately 30 on the roster. So thank your fire department, too. It's not easy, folks. We're in challenging times right now and, you know, staffing is a problem and we're going to work through it, though. So I just want to recognize all of our town employees and the wonderful job they do.
Great. Thank you very much, Karen. And finally, my name is Meg Mott. I've been a moderator since, I believe, 2015. And yeah, very, this is a heartwarming moment. I've been thinking of you all while I was on Zoom doing public information meetings. It doesn't use Robert's Rules of Order, so it's not the same thing. And I kept saying, "One day, we will be back in this room." And here we are. So I'm going to try not to get too emotional and cry, but I may be doing little dances up here from time to time. So let me just, before I actually call the meeting to order with a very special gavel, I wanted to let people know, especially if this is your first town meeting, that this is run by Robert's Rules of Order. And that may sound like, whoa, who's Robert and why do we follow his rules? Well, Robert's pretty special, particularly in the 21st century. Oh, wait a minute. My cellphone is ringing. Whoa, 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 wait a minute. Under Robert's Rules of Order, we can only do one thing at a time. There is no multitasking. That's why I'm going to read each article out loud twice to introduce it to you people. And that's because we're going to only focus on one thing at a time. Amazing, right? This is a skill we seem to be losing with these buzzards and things going off. The other thing about Robert is we can only have one person speaking at a time, which means that we're only listening to one person at a time. And with regard to that, you can see Steve has set up a microphone. You'll have lots of chances to speak today. I will be trying to bring out differing points of view. That's why we come together to do this. And Casey, who is seated near the microphone, can either run the mic back to you or will help with the adjustment of the mic to your face. Robert creates a formal structure so that we, the people of Putney, can actually do our business. We can weigh and consider different arguments, which means that we get to use our political judgments and they count. Robert, in this way, gives us the tools to actually become legislators for a day. We, the people, were the source of everything in this country, right? That's how it works. We, the people, are the source of power. We delegate that power to the legislature to do things according to the consent of the governed. But today, we say to our elected officials, "We've got this. We don't need you today. We got this." Town meeting is understood. It's one of the things when Alexis de Tocqueville came to the United States, he said, "Hmm, this democracy, I'm not so sure about it. Americans all talk about freedom, but they have very little difference of opinion." I had never been in a country where people had less differing points of view. Phew! And one of the things he noticed that kept us from tyranny of the majority were these town meetings because these put a break on centralized government, that without town meeting, we are more likely to fall into the error of thinking of tyranny of the majority. And so those are just some sort of like, why do we use Robert's Rules? Because when I do my next little lesson, which is on how Robert's Rules works, you may wonder, wow, this is fairly complicated. Well, the reason is, it's because we don't want tyranny of the majority. Yeah, we don't want tyranny of the majority and I love it that just one person clapped. Exactly! That's what this looks like. Thank you. Okay. So Robert's Rules of Order. This is the rule for our meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. You cannot change state law, but you can change Robert's Rules with a two-thirds vote if you desire. Tom Ehrenberg is here, sitting up front. He is our parliamentarian. So if the people decide that you want to change something, we will go through that process together. It does require a two-thirds majority. Every single article that is brought onto the floor must be moved and seconded and then the moderator has to restate it. I do have lozenges to keep me going with this because there's a whole lot of saying the same words over and over. That's part of that. We're going to focus on one thing at a time and we don't want to get confused what it is we're discussing. Articles may be amended once they have been brought in front of the people and the article is on the floor. To ask for an amendment, just raise your hand. You say, "I wish to make an amendment." I'll look for a second and then we're going to debate that amendment. And we can also, because we're that clever, amend the amendment. But that's as far as we go. I can do second-degree order thinking. I'm not sure I can go to third-degree order thinking. And Tom Ehrenberg and other people here who are looking at their Robert's Rules are going to help me if we do amend an amendment. It's one of those most exciting moments to get into that you can lose sense of reality. After you've spoken once on an issue, I will not recognize you again while other people have their hands up. If nobody seems to have something to say and you wish to speak a second time, I will ask you if you have something new to add to the discussion. You have the opportunity to call for division. So if people go back and forth on an issue and it looks like as many people are speaking for the issue as are speaking against and we do just a voice vote, it may be hard for the moderator to determine. So at any point in the process, you may ask for a division of the House, one voter. And at that point, when we take the vote, it won't be voice, it will be holding your hand up and then we'll have to count. If seven people want to have a paper ballot, we will create a paper ballot. So for some of these issues, when the voice process may not be as clear, you do have ways to change it. Debate may be cut off according to Robert's Rules. This is an anti-democratic move, so I may look at you a little fiercely, but if you feel that the debate has gone on too long, you may call the question. I will need to get a second and I'll also need to get a two-thirds vote. So it's not necessarily the fastest way to go because determining two-thirds vote takes math and that's not my skill. math, and that's not my skill. I request that you address me as Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator wore a special outfit today. And so if you raise your hands, I will call on you and please address it to Madam Moderator. The Select Board will have lots of answers for specific questions, but in fact, this is not a Select Board meeting. This is a Town Meeting. I'm here to help you do your business. If you have a question for the Select Board, you address it to me, and then we'll turn to see if the Select Board can help us. State law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. This is going to be important if you consider amending something. If your amendment so changes the nature of the article that it's a new article and the people have not seen it in their Town Report, then I will need to vote that is not germane to the article. And this also applies to when we get to other business. Other business is important. The people are doing their other business, but because it is non-binding, it has a different category. And you'll see how in your warning, at the very end, we'll start to move to non-binding discussions. Important for deliberation, but non-binding. My job here is to help you do your work. I have no opinions on any of these matters. I am neutral, and so my job is really to make sure that you have a chance to ask your questions, make an argument, change your mind, hear a different point of view. The only people who can participate in this are people who are registered Town Voters, who are here in person. BCTV is here, so people are able to watch this remotely, but we are not able to, as we did with the public information meetings, we're not able to hear people who are not here in person. And finally, this microphone, which is over there, is, it's a delicate thing. You want to get close with it. If you drop your mic or something, or you're trying to say something and it's not picking up, I'll ask you to start over, because it's really important that we all get to hear what you have to say. Okay, I think those are all the preliminary remarks, and now the most important noise, which is going to take place at, it appears to be 10:40. Putney Town Meeting 2023 is now in order. Please look at your warning. I will start to go through each of the items. I'm ignoring Article 1, the moderator has nothing to do with Australian ballots. We'll now move to Article 2, to elect three trustees to the Putney Public Library Board from the floor. Do I have a motion? Janice Baldwin has a motion, and can we get a second?
Please strive.
And the second, can you tell me your name? Oh, sorry, Jordy. It's taking me a little while to remember. Jordy Heller is the second. Yes, Janice.
So before I even make the motion, there is a mistake on this warning. We are electing four trustees, not three, so...
Okay, so it looks like we need an amendment. Janice Baldwin, are you making an amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay, and you, the amendment...
To Article 2.
To Article 2, and the change you wish to me to have is...
I would like to change 3 to 4.
3 to 4. I need a second. Do we have a second? And that is, I know that person too, and now I, can you say your name?
Michael.
Michael. Stage fright, what can I tell you? Michael, second. We are now going to be discussing the amendment. Do you want to explain why you wish the amendment?
Yes, because it's a mistake. In the morning, there have always been four people that have, and it's embarrassing because I did proofread part of the Town Report, but I don't believe that Mary and I proofread the warning.
I see, okay. So this is just a clerical error. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment? Seeing no objections, it appears the people are ready to vote on the amendment. The way that's going to work is I'm going to ask for all people to say aye, and then I'm going to ask for people to say nay, and then I will make my determination. We are now voting on the amendment to Article 2. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and the amendment passes. We are now discussing Article 2 as amended. Janice.
Do I, I don't have to state the amendment again, I just need to...
You just need to say what you'd like to say on behalf of Article 2 as it is amended.
Thank you. So I'm Janice Baldwin. I'm the Chair of the Putney Library Board, and in that role, I have the really happy responsibility today of presenting to you our slate of four nominees to fill our vacancies on the board. Before I do that, however, I'd just like to take a minute and thank some people as well. As you know, the Putney Library is a very busy place. Every month, over 22 items, our patrons check out over 22 items and attend numerous programs and activities and storytimes. None of this rich activity would be possible without the contribution and the support of the Town. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the staff of the library and our Director, I'd like to thank you, the taxpayers, and the residents of Putney for your ongoing support, not just financially, but for your daily patronage by taking out some of those 2,200 items and attending our programs and our activities and telling us what you think and what you would like to see in your library. I'd also like to take this opportunity for us all to thank or recognize our Library Director, Emily Zervas, and her wonderful staff for their innovation and creativity and hard work. She didn't know I was going to say that. We always want to hear from you, whether it's at the library or here today, we actually have a table, and you can come and participate in a fun little survey we're doing, because we want to know what you think about the library, what you like, and also, most importantly, what you want to see going forward as we embark on, finally, on our five-year strategic plan. Your voices and your interests are really key and fundamental to how the library can thrive. So now I guess I get to do the actual reason that I'm up here. So on behalf of the Putney Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to nominate the following people, and these have been approved by the Board to fill the slates. For the three-year positions, Kevin Champney and Amber Paris, and our new Board Member, Trish Roberts. And for the one-year seat, Ben Lord. We're really excited to add these two new people as well. Their ideas, their enthusiasm, their energy, and their skills will really complete our Board. Thank you.
Great, so we now have a slate of candidates, four people. Are there any other nominations from the floor? I see no other nominations, so we are now voting on Article 2, to elect four trustees to the Putney Public Library Board. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 2 passes. We will now move on to Article 3, to see if the Town will accept the report of the last Town Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second from the floor? Yes, I'm facing out on everybody's name. Christopher Arian. It's really a stage fright, people. I'm going to, I'm going to lose that problem soon. So it has been moved and seconded? Yes.
I'd like to propose an amendment.
Thank you very much. We now have an amendment, and what is the amendment?
So I would like to move that we change the language to read, instead of the last Town Meeting, to the last public informational meeting.
Okay, we now need a second for the amendment, and Laura Chapman is giving us the second on the amendment. We are now discussing the amendment to see if the Town will accept the report of the last public information meeting. Yes, any discussion?
I will just state that it's just a formality that we wrote it as Town Meeting, but in fact, legally, it was warned as and conducted as a public informational meeting, so this is just a bookkeeping, essentially.
Great, is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment? It looks like then we can vote on the amendment. So we're voting on the amendment to change the language of Article 3 from Town Meeting to Public Information Meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It appears the amendment passes. The amendment passes. We are now discussing Article 3 as amendment to see if the Town will accept the report of the last public information meeting. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions? It appears that the voters are ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 3 as amended, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Article 3 as amended is passed. We are now turning to Article 4, to hear and act upon the reports of the Town Officers. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved. Do we have a second from the floor? Nancy, I remembered her name. Nancy Storo. And it appears, nobody seems to be asking for amendment. We are now discussing Article 4. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, it appears the voters are ready to vote on Article 4, to hear and act upon the reports of the Town Officers. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It appears the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 4 passes. At this point, we are just taking a small little detour that is not on your warning, and that is, time to talk about an important annual event here, the Community Service Award. Who wishes to come forward?
I'd like to ask Nancy Olson to come forward to present this year's Community Service Award.
I think that's okay. There we go, all right. The Putney Community Service Award for 2023. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit in March 2020, Hannah Pick, the Executive Director of the Putney Food Shelf, had to make a decision. Close the food shelf for the duration or find a way to remain open to continue to provide supplemental healthy food for those in need. Many food shelf volunteers concerned about the virus stepped away from volunteering. In response, Hannah worked closely with her Food Shelf Board of Directors to develop a drive-up service system and a home delivery system that allowed the Putney Food Shelf to continue to serve people from Putney and nearby communities. In the fall of 2022, Hannah oversaw the transition of the Putney Food Shelf into a new, larger space at the Putney Community Center, and in January 2022, the return to in-person shopping. Hannah joined the Putney Food Shelf part-time on September 1, 2016, as its first, excuse me, as its first employee. In the years since, she has guided the food shelf's development of its Food for Kids food pantry at Putney Central School, provided orientation sessions for new volunteers, shepherded the food shelf's finances, and partnered with other community organizations in carrying out the food shelf's mission. Her work is built on a foundation of compassion and justice. We are fortunate that Hannah, who grew up in Putney and lives here with her husband Matt Mabry and their two daughters, continues to guide the Putney Food Shelf in doing its part to address hunger in our community. Thank you, Hannah. And Hannah had an appointment this morning, so she's not here, but she's coming. She said she'd be here shortly after 11:00.
And I do see that Hannah's parents, Ken Pick and Virginia Scholl, are here, so hopefully maybe they would be willing to accept this plaque in her honor. The Select Board's sincerest gratitude for just a remarkable service that is run in Putney and for all of those that participated under Hannah's able guidance. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I think we have another off-the-warning comment.
Good morning, everyone. This is our first actual Town Meeting in three years. Do we remember how this works? I grew up across the river, where the Town Meeting tradition is also still alive and strong. I spent many long hours huddled in my own chair as a child, wondering when the adults were going to finally get to the point and vote already. Then I grew up and became one of those people offering clarifications and amendments myself. Thanks, Mom! Before we moved here, my husband Lionel and I snuck across the river one first Tuesday in March to try and get a feel for this Town through its own Town Meeting, because we planned to move here as soon as we could. The subject of Golden Cross taking over from rescue was on the warrant, and during lunch break, one resident came up to us and apologized that the discussion had been so contentious. We both laughed, because we'd regularly seen discussions at our own Town Meeting infinitely more heated over much smaller things. That is to say, we have a great thing here in Putney, and that is because of all of you. Thank you. This is the first year of Town Meeting for most of us on the Select Board up here. I was first elected during the COVID years, and everyone else, with the exception of one, was elected last year. That's right, folks. I know it seems like you've been here for almost two decades, but it's only been a year. Which brings me to someone who actually has served as a Select Board Member for almost two decades, Josh Laughlin. I don't know Josh as well as those who have served with him before, so I asked some of those who have worked with him to tell us about what made Josh such a capable and effective member. Lisa Papazian told a story about Josh's first year on the Board, saying in part, "I only overlapped with Josh his first year, 2006, when he came on to fill out the last two years of Reg Rockefeller's term when she moved to Dummerston." But Scott also came on at the same time. We needed two SB members in one year, which caused me great anxiety. I wrote a letter to the reformer about it and asked people to join me in a meeting to see if we could find candidates for SB and other positions. I made cake, and lots of people came. Thankfully, Scott and Josh signed up that night, and we had enough people in the room to fill out their petitions. I am sorry I didn't get to serve longer with Josh. I always enjoyed working with him and I'm happy to call him a friend. Steve Head wrote, "I had had several experiences on various small school boards, but wasn't really prepared for all the complexities of Town Government. The more I studied how things worked, or were supposed to work, the more things I realized I didn't know. Josh was extremely patient answering my questions. I soon realized that working in Town Government was a constant learning experience, and Josh was never too proud to say that things came up that he didn't fully understand either. The Town of Putney has certainly been fortunate to have had such a staunch advocate in their corner for these past 17 years, and the Town is better off for it." David Babbitt said that some of Josh's best attributes were coming from a family steeped in public service, being a thoughtful person who knows the facts, his own opinions, remembers he serves everyone, and has the ability to execute executive responsibilities. It is no surprise that he excelled as a member of our Select Board. Josh's clarity of judgment and commitment to service, combined with a wealth of institutional knowledge, has served us all very well for 17 years. has served us all very well for 17 years. As a citizen of Putney, I'm grateful for all you have done for our town. As an individual, I'm honored to be your friend. Thank you, Josh." Laura Chapman spoke about Josh's character and hard work ethic, saying, "During both my time on the school board and as a select person, I not only got to work with Josh Loughlin, I saw his values in action. We did not always agree on a course of action and even had some robust and difficult debate. But through adversity, character is shown, and we have always agreed on our core desire to work towards the best for our community. I am very grateful to him for all the good he has done with our community, and I wish him all the best." Our town manager, Karen Astley, said, "I'm honored and blessed we had the opportunity to work together. Josh, you are a true leader. You have the skill to teach, to direct, to redirect, to listen, and to communicate effectively. I have learned a great deal in the five years working with you. You have so much institutional knowledge and history serving as a Select Board member for the past 17 years. Josh, there are term limits for a reason. It is to preserve your sanity." And our moderator, Meg Mott, made this point. "Town governance operates at the scale of flawed human beings. To lead in a small community requires more than the thick skin needed to hear out the frustrations and fears of sincere voters. It requires the courage to say, 'We're doing the best we can,' and that's what Josh showed us. He gave people room to express their frustrations until the point when the sharp edge of disagreement began to tear at the social fabric. Thank you, Josh, for being brave enough to show us the tender side of democracy." For my part, I would not have had the courage to step up to the chair position had I not been sure that Josh would step in if I really screwed up. This past year has been a huge learning experience for me. Josh knew when to step back and let me carve my own path, and when to let me know that things had gotten off the rails. It will be kind of weird not seeing you at the table tomorrow. Thank you. For your 17 years of service to the town of Putney, we'd like to present you with this one-of-a-kind piece made by Bob Birch for you to remember us by.
Thank you all, and again, it's been such a pleasure. Thanks.
I think there is one other person who is going to have something on this issue of Josh Loughlin and his amazing service. Mike Murwicky. There's a microphone right up there for you.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Josh. It's not over yet, the accolades for you. I've admired the long time that you've worked for the town, for the good of everyone, trying to do the most good for the most number of people. And I think we both know it's not easy, but there you are, you stuck with it, and I have a world of admiration for you, and that's why I took it upon myself to put before the House of Representatives in Vermont this concurrent House resolution that I'll read now. "House Concurrent Resolution Honoring Putney Select Board Vice Chair Josh Loughlin for His Outstanding Municipal Public Service. Whereas since his midterm Select Board appointment in 2006, the town of Putney has greatly benefited from the fair and thoughtful leadership of its current vice chair, especially when the panel confronted the general store fires in 2008, 99, in 2009, the devastation of Tropical Storm Irene in 2001, and more recently, the continuing impact of the COVID-19 pandemic." I'm not going to read the whole thing, because I think we want to move things on, but I do want to add that along with this, whereas Town Meeting Day 2023 will mark the conclusion of your exemplary service and tenure as a Putney Select Board member, therefore be resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives that they honor Putney Select Board Josh Loughlin for his outstanding municipal service. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I think the town manager has something she wants to say.
All right, folks. So I want to thank a couple people for proofreading our town report. That would be Janice Baldwin and Mary Quinn. They have done it for several years, and it's a big help to have outside eyes on this. And I do want to just make a couple corrections or just bring you to the corrections that need to be made in the town report. So on page six, the ARPA Advisory Committee, their term should end 3/20/23. And then on page, bear with me for a moment. On page 32, about halfway down the page, there's a title, "Social Service Net to Budget FY24." That title actually should read, "Capital Budget/Purchasing Plan." So that section has nothing to do with the library. And it actually should have gone next to the capital plan. And we will correct that next time. And that's it.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing, Meg?
And Josh Loughlin?
I just want to say that the employees of the town of Putney are remarkable, and we're lucky to have all of them, particularly Karen and her, all the folks that work in the office. But as Karen said, highway department, fire department. Without them, we would not be able to do what we do as a town. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, I definitely want to call in Kim Monroe and Cassandra Berg for helping out with the town report. Kim has put a lot of hours and dedication. She's very detail-oriented, and she has taken over the town report the last several years. Kim and I also worked on Town of Putney Financial Supplement, which is a 45-page outline of the budget and what the town departments do. There are copies in the back of the room with CAS, and you can get it on our website. This supplement right here is a check and balance, not only for me. And we look at the audit, and we look at our departments, but we can also plan for the future for capital planning. So, brand new, took three years to roll this out, and it's out this year. So if you get one, you have comments, call my office, I'll walk you through things.
Okay, well, that sounds like a good segue to Article Five.
One more quick thing to add, and I just want to say that we have a dedication page, and the three people are highlighted on it this year. There was one person who did not, who was intended to be on the dedication page as well, and that was Dot Richardson for her long dedication to the grammar school and education in the town of Putney. And then two other people who I just want to give special recognition to. Ward Ogden, who unfortunately passed away just at the very end of December, and just because of the logistics did not come up. He's listed as having passed away, but not recognition beyond that. And also Billy Fitzpatrick, who was not listed in the town report because he was neither living nor did he pass away in the town of Putney. But Billy and his family, the Fitzpatricks, have been generous to the town of Putney for many years with their work and labor in the event of particularly sort of catastrophic events and the storm of 2019 Irene, et cetera. So recognition to those folks who did not have more recognition in the town report. Thank you.
Great, okay, yes. Round of applause for our town and the people who help our town thrive. We'll now move to Article Five. You can find some information about the general fund on page 26 in your annual report. Article Five, Shall the Voters of the Town of Putney Authorize General Fund Expenditures For Operating Expenses of $1,668,226, Of Which $1,304,351 Shall Be Raised by Taxes And $363,875 By Non-Tax Revenues For the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1st, 2023 And Ending June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Josh moves. May I have a second? And when somebody seconds, would you just mind shouting out your name? I've become Zoom-dependent, which means I can find your names at the bottom underneath your face, and that's not happening. So in the back, yes, second.
Melanie Fletcher.
Melanie Fletcher is seconding. It has been, Article Five has been moved and seconded. Shall the Voters of the Town of Putney Authorize General Fund Expenditures For the Operating Expenses of $1,668,226, Of Which $1,304,351 Shall Be Raised by Taxes And $363,875 By Non-Tax Revenues For the Fiscal Year Beginning July 1st, 2023 And Ending June 30th, 2024. Would somebody like to speak on behalf of thee? We have Eva Monden with her hand up. Can we get a mic to Eva? Or Eva, are you able to come forward?
No. Bring her a mic.
Eva, here, let's wait for the mic, so I can hear you.
I don't know quite how to present this, but I'm looking at page 43. On page 43, it says, "The Women's Freedom Center Is to Get $757." I want to see them get $4,000. The reason I say that is that of those people murdered in the state of Vermont, 50% were women in domestic situations. Okay? So the Freedom Center educates people and offers safety for people. And that just seems so little that we can offer for the safety of women. We talked about women earlier here. You know, all the, the mic spoke about the, our Attorney General has brought this up, in fact, and she's quite knowledgeable about the situation of the safety of women in the state of Vermont. So I would like to see, and I don't know how to do this, Meg, I'd like your help, but to change this to $4,000 instead of, and it would change the total number from 757. Might you all help me with that?
So it appears that we have an amendment, and that amendment is to, if I'm hearing you correctly, Eva, to increase the operating expenses by $4,000? That would add to what's listed?
Well, it wouldn't be $4,000 fully, because we already committed to 757, and my math is not off the top of my head. But I'm sure somebody like, who works at Landmark up there, she would be able to do that for us.
Thank you to Kim with the calculator. We have an amendment to increase the operating expenses by the amount of $3,243. This is an amendment on the floor. I need a second. And could you just say your name, please? Amelia Struthers. So we have a motion and second for this amendment. We have had a speech on behalf of the amendment. I'm curious if there's anyone who wishes to speak against the amendment or has a question. It sounds like Jeanette White. You have a question. Can we get a mic to Jeanette White?
I'm not sure, I need one, do I?
Yes.
So I might suggest that 4,000 is such an odd number, because none of the other social service agencies get 4,000. They're, the way we do social service agencies is divided into three kind of groups. And so rather than 4,000, put it into the category of the $4,637, and so subtract 757 from 4,637, so that it fits neatly into that category instead of having out there on a limb by itself.
So Jeanette, it sounds like you want to make an amendment to the amendment.
I would propose amending the amendment to put it into the category of the $4,637, which would make it, I believe, $3,580? Or something like that.
So the Women's Freedom Center would be moved to, and can we get a, what is this category? I understand there's a three-tier system. How do we identify the category?
It would be from Category C into Category B.
Yes.
Category C to Category B.
Yes.
So now we are doing an amendment to an amendment. Everybody following this? I need a second for the amendment to the amendment, and could you shout your name out? Holly. Holly, last name? Thank you, Holly. We are now debating the amendment to the amendment, which is to change the Women's Crisis Center from Category C to Category B.
Meg, can I speak to this?
Yes.
So the way the Social Services budget is set up, if you look at it in your page, is that it's a percentage of the proposed general and highway fund budgets. So it also cannot be, the general fund cannot be amended from the floor to increase a specific line item. It would be increased in the general fund with the recommendation to allocate it to a certain place. That's by Vermont statute. So my recommendation, if we feel the need to increase the social services budget by the amount of $3,243, is that correct? Then that would be the amendment we would be looking for. Or I think the way that would fit into our social services budget appropriately would be a reorganization of this budget as proposed to move that group from Category C to Category B, but keep the social services budget as it is listed. So it doesn't actually increase the general fund budget, but it changes the allocation within these categories. We could spend a little time and revisit this if somebody wanted to work on some math related to that, or there could be a proposed amendment to add that $3,243 to the general fund with the recommendation that it was allocated to social services. Otherwise, we either are not abiding by statute if we're saying that's where it's going to go, or we are not abiding by our social services policy if we increase the social services budget by that amount. So just, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I'm just trying to clarify the implications of this.
So Josh, it sounds like you are arguing against the amendment to the amendment. Because the amendment to the amendment took us away from $3,243 added to the general fund. The amendment to that amendment was to switch from Category C to Category B. Am I hearing that correctly? Because we're right now, the only thing we're thinking about is the amendment to the amendment as proposed by Jeanette White. And I'm taking what Josh said to be against that second amendment.
So I guess.
Wait, can I get Tom Ehrenberg?
The amendment to the amendment didn't specify a dollar amount. It specified moving from one category to another, which is what Josh is suggesting, is what I understand.
So the two could be combined?
So if we pass the amendment to the amendment, what we're saying is- So if we pass the amendment to the amendment, what we're saying is we want to put the Women's Freedom Center into group B on page 43. Then we have to consider the main question of whether we want to increase the general fund.
All right. So I want to tell that for everybody to make sure you heard what Tom Ehrenberg, our parliamentarian, said. His recommendation is that we first address the issue, not calling dollar amounts into question, that we recommend that the Women's Freedom Center be moved from a category C to category B as seen on page 43. We will then vote on that, and the next thing, we'll go back to the first amendment, which is the dollar amount to the general fund. Does that make sense? I'm getting a nod from Tom Ehrenberg. Okay, so we're on the amendment to the amendment. Yes, Josh wants to, oh, I'm going to go with somebody who hasn't spoken yet. Can we get the mic to Kate Dodge? You may need to go to the stand.
I just wanted a point of clarification that the, I think Josh mentioned this, but I'm not sure it's clear to everybody. If we move this from C to B, I believe, that means we reduce the amounts for all the other agencies in B because we allocate this by percentage. That's right? Okay.
Great. Elizabeth has had her hand up. Are you speaking for or against the amendment to the amendment?
I want to make a comment in relationship to adding money. I was trying to figure out what the amount was of expenses and how much by taxes from last year to this year, and I'm looking at an increase of more or less $150,000. And I was just thinking, if we're starting out on our very first discussion about adding money, I think we should pay attention to the fact that we're always increasing money, 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 and in the end, we end up with a huge tax bill for everybody. And I think everybody should remember, when they vote on adding money to anything, it's increasing our taxes, and our taxes have gone up enough. Let's be a little careful with our taxes. None of us are not feeling a little pinch. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we have a hand up here in front, whose name I can't remember again.
Swift Debrady. I just would, a question to the select board of an update on where the, this proposal, this policy is being updated. So is there any changes or like, where is the thought process on, has there any update on that? Because we're working with a policy that's on their to-do list of being edited. So it seems like we could do a lot of work right now and possibly get lost in the weeds on something that's going to be edited.
So it's a question for the select board. Peg, thank you.
Yeah, that is on the to-do list, but we have not changed the policy yet, so we're working on the existing policy that these funds will, are done proportionally. So by adding the Women's Freedom Center to category B, it just means category B will slightly change the, the dollar amount to each.
I'm going to go to the floor before I come back to the select board. You and the, can you give us your name, please?
I'm Yield.
Yeah. Oh, you will Yield? Okay.
I, I just want to say it would also change the equation for category C, because when you remove one of those, then the numbers in category C would actually increase a little bit. So it's just, just to be clear that we're talking about shifting the whole equation a little.
Great, thank you.
I'm Jim Oliver. I was on the select board at the time that this social service policy was originally implemented, and I just want to comment that it was precisely because of the kind of discussion we're having now that we've instituted this policy in the past. I, I am not speaking against Eva's suggestion that the particular agency that she favors should receive more money. That's not the intention of what I'm saying now. What we've got here is a process, I think we're seeing how it doesn't work if we try to do it this way, because all of us have particular interests that we feel very strongly, and it's very hard to balance those out in, in this setting, because a representative of each one of these listed agencies could come forward and make a very compelling case why they should have more money. In my opinion, the right way to do this is to have a policy such that the select board makes these decisions. We vote for them, we can vote them in and out if we dislike what they do, and not have these issues come before the full town meeting because it just doesn't work.
Great. Would somebody else like to speak to this? If it's all right, I'm going to go to Eileen. She's had her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, along with this potential change, we also do have two articles, Article 13 and Article 14, to add two other agencies to this list. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind as we discuss this.
Great. We had a hand up here. Yes, Jean.
Jean Giddings, and I think this is a point of information. How do we decide who's on category three? Is it related to the amount of services they provide to Putney, or is it related to some other, some other reasoning?
I will try to explain this as best I can. Group A are Putney-based agencies, so they are in Putney, and they serve mostly Putney residents. Group B are agencies that are outside of Putney, but they provide a significant amount of services to Putney residents, so they have, have a larger stake in the process. Group C is all other agencies. So it could be a group that doesn't serve Putney residents directly, but maybe indirectly serves us as the Women's Freedom Center might, but they don't necessarily have any ties to Putney.
Okay. I have a hand up in the back, sir.
Bob Meyer. I just did the quick math. If you move the Women's Freedom Center into category B, everybody in B is only going to get $3,800 and change. And so I agree with what you said about, what Peter said about the fact that it's a bad system to do that. And so for myself, I'm going to vote against any changes, not that I'm voting against the support for the women's piece, but that's a bad system that, that moving it at this point affects everybody else. I think we're going to end up in endless amendments.
So that was speaking against the amendment to the amendment, which is to move the Women's Freedom Center from category C to category B as identified on page 43. Is, we have a hand down here. Laura, you haven't spoken on this issue.
So in looking at the entirety of this list of group C, the AIDS Project is serving our community enormously with the opioid crisis. Groundworks Collaborative merged several years ago and is actually providing what was three services on this list, I think years ago. Brattleboro Area Hospice, with our aging population, is probably serving this community enormously. And I could just keep going down and naming off how each of these agencies has a huge impact in Putney. I would be really uncomfortable singling out any one of these, even though I recognize that every single one of these is enormously beneficial to us. And so I would vote against the amendment.
Great, thank you. And for that clarity, would anybody like to speak in favor of the amendment to the amendment? It appears that the voters may be ready for a vote. We are now going to vote on whether to amend the proposed amendment to include the language of the Women's Freedom Center moving from category C to category B as on page 43. All those in favor of this amendment to the amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Please, all those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and the amendment to the amendment does not pass. We are now returning to the original amendment, which is, I won't read the entire article, but to increase the operating expenses by the amount of $3,243. Would anybody like to speak in favor of the amendment? And if somebody, because Eva has spoken on this, is there anybody else who wishes to? Seeing no other hands, I'm going to give it to Eva Monden. Can we get a mic to Eva, please?
Thank you. I appreciate what Laura said. The thing about the Women's Freedom Center is you're never going to know who in this room has gone there for refuge, because they don't announce the names of the people. Ladies and gentlemen, pay attention to that. It might be your neighbor, and she might be down there seeking help. So pay attention. If half of the homicides in the state of Vermont are women in domestic violent situations, we need the Women's Freedom Center to continue to offer refuge and educate. Thank you.
I'm looking for somebody who would wish to speak against the amendment. It appears that the voters are ready to vote. We are now voting on whether to increase the amount in the general fund, $3,243, which funds would go to the Women's Crisis Center, Women's Freedom Center. All those-
Sorry, just to be clear, that would be the recommendation of the voters, that's where the money went, but statutorily, they cannot determine where that money goes.
Thank you, Josh. That's an important point. You're, you're voting on the amount with that recommendation. Laura Chapman, can you, Women's Freedom Center?
It's not the Women's Freedom Center. It's the Freedom Center. They, I, if I alter this.
Okay, thank you. So we are now voting, once again, this is the amendment, and I'm having a sense that we're getting ready to a vote, on the amendment to Article Five, increasing the amount by $3,243 with the recommendation for the Freedom Center to be moved, for the recommendation for that money to go to the Freedom Center. Everyone understand? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nay has it. The nay has it, and the amendment does not pass. We are now returning to the article. In its original form, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $1,668,226, of which $1,304,351 shall be raised by taxes and $3,603,875 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 and ending June 30th, 2024. Is there any discussion of the article? We've just been talking about amendments so far. So now we are discussing the article, and I see a hand in the back, and if we could just get a, a name and a mic to Claire Wilson. Casey, are you able to get a mic to Claire Wilson? Thank you. We are getting the mic to Claire Wilson.
I'm just wondering what the non-tax sources of revenue are.
Select board, do you have an answer for Claire Wilson?
Claire, that would be like grants that we, or funding we get from the state. And so that would be under revenue on page 26. And it's licensee, licenses and permit fees. Let's see, the biggest one is the current use program. So we get money, extra revenue that's not taxed from different sources. I wish it were more, but-
Any other questions? Discussion? Once again, it, oh, yes, please. Elizabeth? Yes. You want to come forward to the, or come to the mic, or we'll get a mic to, and if you could give us your full name.
Hi, Elizabeth Warner. I'm a resident of the village, and we are really hopeful that we're going to be working on a master plan that came out of the VCRD to increase our tax basis to help offset the incredible cost of keeping this town running. We really need to move forward on focusing on some economic vibrancy in this town and bringing more people in to support it. We can't keep doing this on the backs of the taxpayers. And that's my comment.
Great. Is there anybody else who has a question, a comment? Yes, Lionel. And if you could say your full name.
Yes, I'm Lionel Chute, and that raises a good question for me, which is, could someone please tell us how this year's taxation compares to last year's? Is this an increase? Will this result in an increase in property tax? And if so, by how much? Could someone on the board share that information with us so that we can understand the context that was just raised?
Great. Is there somebody from the select board who can answer Lionel's question?
This is getting into accounting for government, which is not easy. I don't know if anybody has this report, or it's in the general, I mean, it's in the town report, page 32, and it's also in this financial supplement that Karen was talking about earlier. This is a really, really awesome document. It really breaks down stuff in a, for me, a much easier way to understand what's going on. So I really encourage everybody to look at that. So to answer the question, this is, the question is answered on page nine of this document. So the, the total tax increase is .0741, so that's seven cents from last year. Last year's tax rate, and if I do this wrong, please correct me, is .9023, and this year's is .9764. And that's, that's the municipal rate.
And that includes the general fund and the highway fund. It's both budgets.
Do we have other questions? Is there somebody who hasn't spoken yet on this issue? Was it James?
It is Jim Oliver.
Yeah, Jim Oliver.
I'm looking at page 32. Is it correct to say that if you just look at the third line there on page 32, it says an increase of 8.95%? That would seem to me to be the useful number that people can understand. And I have an additional question. Obviously, in past years, we would have the education fund also included in here, and because of the reorganization of the system, we don't, does the select board know where that has come out or where it may come out? Because of course, that's two-thirds of whatever increase there's going to be, and 8.95% is only one-third of what the total is. the 8.95% is only one-third of what the total is going to be. So I ask you if you—you have any information about the school.
Is there somebody on the Select Board who is willing to—
So, yeah, so as you point out, we don't know what the educational tax rate is. That won't come out until, I believe, later in the summer. But we anticipate that it will be 1.655. Do we have a— I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So the homestead educational tax rate is 1.826, and the non-residential educational tax rate is 1.655.
I'd like to add too, and thank you for bringing that up, Jim. So we have preliminary numbers from Frank Rucker at the Supervisory Union. We never get the non-homestead or the non-residential rate until we lodge the grand list. Then the state comes up with the numbers, and that's how we base the educational tax rate. They give it to us usually before July, and then we can process bills for an August payment. So it is a little disconnected, a little frustrating too, now that the schools are within the district. And before, when it was just here, a town school, it was a lot easier. But those are the numbers right now. They will change. Don't count on it, because they will change. And Frank's pretty good about the homestead rate being pretty close. And I also wanted to mention too, Jim, you write with the amount that needs to be raised in the budget on page 26, it's the very first line, $107,158 is the increase from last year. That's the number, and it's 8.95%. So that is the number that's going to affect taxes.
So I have— Jim wants to make another comment, but Lionel also has— so you both are in the second time speaking. I'm going to go first to Lionel, and there may be another question that the Select Board can answer.
Terrific. Thank you. Yeah, I just—in the future, I think it would be really helpful if, when this item comes up, there can be a short presentation by the town manager or a member of the Select Board that introduces this. Obviously, this is a gigantic issue, money, taxes, it's the heart of the meeting. And so if we could just get some context, where are we, and why are we where we are? What are the trends that we're seeing looking back? And what are the trends that we're anticipating going forward? Then we can understand where things stand. So from my work with a county in New Hampshire, I'm very aware of inflation. I assume that inflation has played a big role in why the taxes will be going up on us this year. It would be really helpful to the constituents to understand the trends that are causing these increases, so that we can have confidence that good decisions are being made. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So here's something for the Select Board and the town manager, that for next year's town meeting, to have some remarks prepared to provide a backstory would be very helpful. Before I go to Lisa, who hasn't spoken yet, I would like to go to her first, and then I will turn it over to Eileen and Karen. Lisa?
Lisa Popazian. You could probably answer this too, along with the other. I'm just wondering, is there— do we know what the change in the grand list is? Or what is the trend? Do we have an idea?
Can anybody answer the grand list question? Karen?
I won't answer the grand list question, because that I'm going to leave for Jordy. But I will segue into it. So to answer Lionel's question, so COVID, I watched through COVID. That was a problem. I knew in '22 that things, you know, our budget might go over. In '23 too, I'm nervous about '23. I've already sent out memos to our department heads and said, if you don't need it, don't spend it. Last year, we had negatives in both the general and the highway fund. It was enough to make me concerned. Inflation, right now, is affecting the increase. I try to level fund the budget as best I can, but I will tell you, insurances, medical insurance, Vermont Leagues of City and Towns, which is our liability insurance and our workers' comp insurance, both for the highway and the fire department, that has gone up. Fuel has gone up. That includes heating fuel and fuel for our trucks. And in '22, what I did is I— what I do is I look at the budget from year to year, and I look at the trends, Lionel. It's like, okay, we're over budget here, I raise it up. We're under here, I lower it. I did that with the highway department on both their fuel lines, and we're going to be over budget. Because I can't predict, I do the best I can to forecast, and what'll happen for fiscal year '24, because I increased budgets based on fuel costs, our current costs that we pay right now. My hope is that the gas is going to come down, and we're going to see a surplus. So it's always—I try to balance it, it's so difficult. And all it takes is like, one July 29, 2021 rainstorm, where we had to borrow money and then pay it back with interest that costs $8,000, you know? But I couldn't work with a budget and pay out $695,000 out of the highway budget because of one storm.
And just a reminder, we are discussing Article V, which is the general fund. The next article, we will be able to discuss the highway fund. Eileen has been waiting patiently, and then I'm going to go back to Jim. I'm looking for other hands who are up.
Karen just told me I can do the Lister one, but I was going to foster off to Jordy, because he is a Lister here. There is a correlation—I just wanted to mention that there's a correlation between the educational rate and our CLA. Our CLA is very low, I think it's 83— 82.3.
And can you explain what CLA is?
So the CLA is the Common Level of Appraisal. It's the—the our grand list, it's a three-year study that the state does, pitting our grand list against fair market value sales that have happened in Putney. And as many of you know, those sales have gone through the roof, and consequently, our CLA has dropped significantly. So that number is used in part to equalize the grand list, and it determines what kind of funding we will get from the state and the tax rate. Jordy, did you want to speak to any—the grand list growing question?
So I'll need to actually— Eileen— Jordy, you have been asked, are you okay with providing information about the grand list? And the change seemed to be the key question. What is the change in the grand list?
We don't know yet what the change in the grand list will be, because this is our inspection season, so we're just starting to look at all new projects. Typically, it's minimal growth every year, and this year doesn't look like it will be any different. So the grand list will be slightly more than last year, but not enough to really offset tax rates. And the CLA that Eileen mentioned also affects taxes paid by utilities like Green Mountain Power, which is a pretty large property or taxable entity in Putney. And it affects the current use payments that we receive. So the lower our CLA, the harder we're hit. There will be a townwide reappraisal completed by July of '24, so everybody in town will have a new value, and our CLA should be 100 or 1, which is right where we need it. Thanks.
Okay, great. So we are still discussing Article V. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Robin, in the back?
Hi. Thank you, Madam Moderator. First, I have a question. When you were discussing the educational tax, and some numbers were put out there, I was not sure if those were what the actual tax rate was, which is what I understood, or is that the increase that's proposed? But I do have a comment, which is, I'm in and out of town hall frequently on committee business, and I can tell those of you here who aren't, but who know this, that our town government works very hard at keeping this budget down. I don't like paying taxes, nobody likes paying taxes. But it's a frequent topic of conversation when I do go into town hall. The struggle to keep budgets down, the struggle with individual line items, how to get it down. So this is not a willy-nilly, well, you know, we'd like to add a little bit here and add a little bit there. They are—they do their best to keep this down, and this increase is despite that. So that's pretty much my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to take that as a statement in support of Article V. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against Article V? It may appear that the voters are getting ready to vote. We are voting on Article V. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of $1,668,226, of which $1,304,351 shall be raised by taxes and $363,875 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article V passes. I see that the time is approaching noon, but my my sense is that we should persevere to Article VI. So let us take Article VI. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,653,419, of which $1,075,569 shall be raised by taxes and $577,850 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024? May I have a motion? So moved. May I have a second from the floor? A second from the floor. Janice Baldwin is seconding from the floor. We are now discussing Article VI, which I am going to restate, per Robert. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,653,419, of which $1,075,569 shall be raised by taxes and $577,850 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024? You can find out more information, page 33, in your town report. Anybody wish to speak in favor, or perhaps provide some context for Article VI?
I guess that's me, folks. So basically, the highway department— so Brian Harlow, our road foreman, runs a lean and conservative budget. He is a need-not-want type of department head when it comes to his budget, and I'm very thankful for that. So on page 33, the very first line item, property taxes, so there's an increase of $70,207 from last year, which is 6.98%. Inflation, folks, when we were doing this budget, was around 8%. So for this budget to be under that inflation rate, that's pretty good. Last year, we created the Capital Reserve Fund, where we're putting in $145,000. You'll see that in the budget again this year. Our long-term plan is to get away from borrowing to buy our equipment. And Brian has built up the budget, his operating surplus, where we can transition into buying instead of borrowing. The amount of money that we pay in interest is crazy. And then on page 45 is the long-term debt that we have left. The only thing I can comment about the highway department, we did put in a full-time position with a family medical plan. And again, the highway budget, the increases are mainly medical insurance, the one salary, the Vermont Leagues of City and Towns insurance went up, and the fuel. Also, you're going to see in this budget, revenue, we are going after some grants. We already have a structures grant committed for a box culvert. We're hoping we're going to get the paving grant, so that's like an extra $200,000 in paving that we possibly can do this year in fiscal '24. And someone, when I first took this position, they said, you got to follow the money. So revenue balances expenses. So—and it's also transparent to all you folks. Again, take a look at the supplement, because it'll give you a more in-depth and explain the budget. When I get new Select Board, their first year is like deer in headlights. The budget is not an easy thing to explain or to get your head around. But anyone has any questions, they can always call my office or stop in. But that's kind of the crux of the highway department.
Great. I'm going to go to the floor first to see if there's any questions, comments? Anybody want to speak in favor or against? Jim? Jim?
Jim Oliver. I'd like to speak in favor of the budget, and this is kind of following on from what I said on the previous article. The the increases in each of the general fund and the highway fund, it's in the vicinity of close to 9%. I'm in the position of collecting social security benefits, fortunately, and they went up 8.3%, I think, this year. So I think we all have to keep that in mind, that there's there's something going on with inflation that is real. And I think that also, I mentioned that apparently, the projection for the education fund is that it will—the increase in education funding will be 1.6% or so. And if you keep in mind that two-thirds of what we pay in taxes goes to education and one-third to the town, roughly, actually, our tax bills look like they probably will go up 4% to 5%, which is less than inflation and less than the increase that I got in social security. So I always come to town meeting with the bottom line of how much more am I going to have to pay this year, and what I'm seeing is seems reasonable to me.
Great. So is there anybody on the floor who has a question, or wishes to— So is there anybody on the floor who has a question or wishes to speak against Article six, which has to do with the highway fund? I don't see any hands on the floor. Josh?
I just want to make one comment, and that is, it hasn't come up specifically employee salaries. We decided this year to put up employee salaries by 6%. Typically, in a sort of average year, we put them up anywhere from 1.5% to 3%. But as Jim was just highlighting, because of, I'm not sure what the exact number is right now, year-to-date, but inflation is hovering in the high eights, or has been hovering in the high eights. So, you know, we spent a lot of time thinking about that, and we are very aware that employees are susceptible to being lured away by other towns and the state, who are willing to pay them more than we are, and we are grateful for their willingness to stay with us, partly just because of their commitment to the town of Putney. But we felt it was important for us to keep our employee salaries as close to the change in inflation rate as we can. So that's certainly a driver as well. But also, just the fact that, you know, the inflation rate affects everything across the board on all of this stuff, whether it's fuel, materials, purchases, benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Everything is being affected by inflation. So that's a large part of what the answer to the question is, why is this happening? Is just the reality of the cost of everything in the world right now.
Okay. Do we have a question on the floor? Yes, Kate Dodge. I think you need to get a little closer to the mic there, Kate.
No, it's off.
It's off. It is?
Yeah, there we go.
So this isn't a question, I just wanted to express deep appreciation for our highway department. I know last summer, when we had that big storm and the culvert down at the bottom of Holland Hill Road was collapsed, I think, and with the next morning, they were out there working on it, and it was pretty remarkable. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the highway department. Are there any other questions? Anybody want to speak against? It appears that the voters may be ready to vote on Article six. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize highway fund expenditures of $1,653,419, of which $1,75,569 shall be raised by taxes and $577,850 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article six passes. We're moving along a little more quickly. I'm tempted to keep going. When your stomachs get too grumbly, I will entertain a motion to recess for lunch. So I'll count on you to keep in touch with your tummies. We're now going to move to Article seven. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase a new highway truck with accessories at a cost not to exceed $60,000 to be paid from the Highway Capital Reserve Fund? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second from the floor? And that looks like Holly, whose last name is? It's not Holly?
No.
Who is the second, please? Melanie Fletcher, sorry. Melanie Fletcher is the second. We now have the article in front of us. Does anybody wish to speak on behalf of Article seven? Karen?
So just a quick explanation why this is on here. So the highway department will be trading a 2013 GMC Sierra pickup, just a regular pickup truck. Normally, we keep pickup trucks for eight years, so this one's 10 years old, because Brian likes it. But it's time to go. And usually, there's one piece of equipment each year, and at some point, if we can skip a year, we try to do that. So just remember, this is a 10-year-old pickup, and he's going to trade it for a new one.
Great. Are there any questions from the floor? Yes. Robin in the back? If you could give us your full name.
Mr. Trump, I would just like to propose an amendment to the article that the town pursue the option of an alternatively-fueled vehicle if it can be purchased within this $60,000 that's currently specified. Thank you.
So we have an amendment to pursue, Robin, I want to make sure I get the correct language. Pursue the option of a, can you give us the terms you used?
Alternatively-fueled vehicle, meaning like a hybrid.
I'm going to go with alternatively-fueled vehicle.
If it can be achieved within the $60,000 that's specified.
So that would change the language. Before I call for a second, I just want to make sure I get this right. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase a new highway truck with accessories at a cost not to exceed $60,000 and to pursue the option of an alternatively-fueled vehicle to be paid from the Highway Capital Reserve Fund? Did I get that correctly?
If it can be purchased within that price.
Yeah, right. So that language, the $60,000, we're not altering. We're leaving that the same.
All right. Thank you.
So we have a motion to amend Article seven. Do I have a second? Yes, Sue Oakley is the second.
Sue Coakley.
Coakley, I'm sorry. I should know that. Sue Coakley is the second. We are now discussing the amendment to the article to include the language, to pursue the option of an alternatively-fueled vehicle. Would somebody like to speak on behalf of this amendment? Lionel?
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of the amendment. We're all exhausted and overwhelmed by the reality of climate change. It's gone from something that we were all worrying about collectively to something that we're all collectively ignoring. And I'm just as guilty of that as anyone else. But the problem of climate change isn't going away, and we are approaching a moment where we will find ourselves in crisis management. And whether the vehicle is running on gas or running on electric, it won't run if we don't have infrastructure. So we're not ready today to talk about the future and what's probably going to happen relatively soon. But we have an open door right now, as a community, to be proactive about the issue of greenhouse gases. And if we want to keep going and just say, well, let somebody else deal with it, the technology's not there, it's too expensive, I don't understand it, those people are tree huggers, I don't, whatever the reasoning is behind why we can't seem to turn the corner and address this crisis that's coming, the door's open right now. It won't be open in a few years. So like musical chairs, this is the time where we're all going round the chairs and the music's playing. We have a chance right now to put some more chairs down before the music stops. If we wait much longer, we won't have that opportunity. So I would really encourage this community, which formed in a large way out of the wisdom and the alternative thinking of the generation before mine, to realize its potential as a progressive community and start doing something about what we all know is happening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And would somebody like to speak against the amendment? Does anybody have any questions about the amendment? Yes, in the back, please. And if you could give us your name, please.
My biggest thing is going to be, while I understand and I respect the idea of greenhouse gases and things like that, what is the actual feasibility and amelability of something like that in a 3/4 ton, 1 ton or bigger, in a hybrid, in where we live, able to do the things like plowing all hours, because we're talking, sometimes people plow in 15 hours? Plow accessories, lights, and anything else that's going to be under the term accessories? What is the feasibility of doing that in a 1 ton or better pickup truck for under $60,000?
Great. So that's a very specific question. Is there anybody here who can answer Heather's question about availability of equipment?
It would be somewhat anecdotal on my part, but I know a number of people who have been exploring these pickup trucks recently. Availability is definitely limited. I think that we are very close to being at a point where those kinds of trucks are going to be available more readily. I think we're unfortunately not quite there. The trucks that are mostly available at this time, the most, the best-known one at the moment is called the F-150 Lightning. It's a Ford truck. It's really not the heavy-duty nature of the vehicle we need. The other thing that's complicated about these types of vehicles at this stage is that because of the way the battery system is designed, they are not readily amenable to alteration for the purposes of the municipal vehicle. I think we're really close, but I do think it's going to be a little longer. But I also think, I respect the amendment, and I think that we should be exploring those possibilities all the time as they become more available, because hopefully, you know, as Lionel said about the problems we're facing, the technology changes are also evolving very quickly, and so staying ahead of it, I don't think we're quite there. But I think it would certainly be, I don't, you know, I wouldn't argue against the amendment. I think the likelihood of being able to achieve it is pretty limited. But again, I think we should be keeping an eye on it readily as the technology changes.
I want to see if there's any other hands from the floor as we discuss the amendment. We've heard a question that was framed somewhat in opposition. Laura Chapman, do you have something you want to say in favor of the amendment?
You said that this was a pickup truck. Is this truck going to be used for plowing? What is the purpose of this truck?
So it does have a plow on it, and it's mostly for going from projects to projects. It's actually Brian Harlow's, the road foreman's pickup. It's also used for like small roads, like Vinegar Lane and that kind of stuff, but throwing in, you know, equipment if they get to be on a road someplace. But it's pretty much a run-around truck.
Thank you.
Do we have any other statements, questions? Sue, do you want to take the mic?
Sue Coakley, I think that it's important to keep in mind that Putney is not the only community that's looking at climate resilience and response. We're a part of a whole state and actually a region that's addressing that. And so our look for a pickup truck is a one-off for us, but it's not a one-off for other government. And I would encourage us to work with the state and other regional efforts to see if we can't procure what we're looking for as part of a larger procurement effort. It shouldn't take that much longer, and if it does, then it's not feasible. But when you're doing breakthrough things that are important to the goals and the resolutions we've already passed as a town, sometimes you look in different ways to achieve it. So I would say that while availability may be limited, we may be able to be part of Vanguard that is trying to bring those technologies forward. So I would encourage us to keep our eyes open to that if it's feasible.
Great. Thank you very much. So that was a statement in favor of the amendment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment? I'm wondering if there's any questions about the amendment. Question, Mike Murwicky?
I just want to add a point of information to this. We're talking about what's happening on different levels, and I just want people to know that your governor right now is riding around in his state vehicle, which came in last month, which is a Ford Lightning pickup truck, all-electric. So I think it's feasible. I mean, he drives all over the state in that, or he is driven, I should say. He is driven by his state trooper detail. But he wanted to make the statement that this is possible, it's feasible, and he's a pickup truck guy anyhow, but he's showing that those pickup trucks are out there, and it is a viable option out there for us.
Great. I'm starting to hear a lot of for the amendment. I haven't heard much against the amendment, which makes me wonder if we're ready to vote on the amendment. I'm seeing some nods. Robin, you have your hand up. Is there a last comment you want to make about the amendment? Yes, you may.
Sorry to be taking up so much time. I'm sorry, just to clarify, the intent of the amendment is not to dictate what we do, that just basically request a bid on this. I've driven trucks myself for many years, and first and foremost is specking out the trucks so that it will accomplish its purpose. There's no point in us getting a vehicle of any type, particularly alternatively-fueled, if it's not going to do the job that it needs to do. I'm not necessarily saying we have to go this route, but let's look at it. You know, we can get into the mechanics of it. I have doubts myself as to whether it's feasible, but I want to make sure that the town at least is looking at this every time that it comes up. Is there an option out there? As Josh says, the technology is changing. Brian, it's going to be his vehicle. I mean, I know that the highway department doesn't really have personal vehicles, but he's going to have to use it. It needs to do what he needs it to do. But if it's possible, if we can do it, let's at least look at a bit. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. It looks like we are ready to move towards voting on the amendment. Okay. What we are voting on is the amendment to Article seven. I'm going to read it with the new language. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase a new highway truck with accessories at a cost not to exceed $60,000 and to pursue the option of an alternatively-fueled vehicle to be paid from the Highway Capital Reserve Fund? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and the article is amended. We are now discussing Article seven as amended. Is there somebody who wishes to speak to add anything new to the discussion of Article It looks like we may be ready to vote on the article as amended. We are now voting on the article, I have to read it again because that was for the amendment, this is for the article as amended. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase a new highway truck with accessories at a cost not to exceed $60,000 and to pursue the option of an alternatively-fueled vehicle to be paid from the Highway Capital Reserve Fund? All those in favor of the amended article, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article seven as amended is passed. Is there somebody, I wanted to invite an elected official, if I may? Is there somebody, I wanted to invite an elected official, if I may, before we move on to Article 8 or entertain a motion to recess for lunch, but before we enter into that question, may I invite Wendy Harrison to the stage?
You are so alert. Thank you very much. I just got here. Thank you for having me. I'm Wendy Harrison. I'm one of your two state senators. I'm just before lunch, so I'll be brief. I serve on two committees in the Senate. I serve on housing, or Economic Development, Housing, and General Affairs is one committee, and the other one is the Institutions Committee. And what the Institutions Committee does is review and approve the capital budget, which is a two-year budget of the state. And we'll get to that in the next part of the session because the House looks at that first. And so that includes things like grants to municipalities for water and sewer, includes state parks, all-state buildings, and corrections facilities. So that's, there's a lot of work there. What I've been spending time on is in the Economic Development Committee, where we've been working on housing. Obviously, housing is a huge issue throughout the state. We heard from employers, we heard hospitals can't hire not only nurses, but also doctors. I mean, it's a really, really severe problem. There's some concerns with fair housing, concerns with the ability to find rentals. And we had some good conversations on mobile homes, which often don't get discussed, but that's an important source of housing, and it's important to keep them maintained, so we put some money into that. So we heard a lot about the issues, and we came up with an omnibus bill that we voted out unanimously a week and a half ago. And so now that bill will go to the Senate. First, it's a Natural Resources Committee. We had some suggestions about Act 250, which is a pretty, you know, important subject. People have very strong opinions on it. We think we came up with some good ways to make the process better without removing the protections of Act 250, because we, as the others, and most people in Vermont, I think, care very much about our landscape, about having settlement patterns where you have a town, towns separated from each other, having their own identity, and separated by forests and fields. And so we don't believe that this bill hurts that. But it will provide more rental housing, more ownership housing in various ways, which I know, I know we're, you're about to eat lunch, so I won't go into too much detail. One program I do want to tell you about, it's called Vhip, and it was a pilot program last year. Now it's a, if this goes through, it'll be a permanent program. That's a program where private landlords can get funding either in the shape of a grant or a loan, it depends on what you do, for $50,000 to, or $30,000 are the ranges. And that's to bring existing units that are not to code up to code. So what I like about it is it preserves existing housing stock, which is really important, and it's much less costly than other ways of updating these units. The average cost that it took last year when they were working on this was about $36,000 per unit, and that compares to $100,000 to $150,000 for a new unit. So I'm not saying we shouldn't build new, but we should repair what we have first, is my opinion. So we'll get that information out. It has a ways to go, this bill, because as I said, it has to go first through our committee and then to the Senate, and then over to the House, but the House is really anxious to do a lot for housing, too. So I will stop there, and I'll be around. Oh, am I taking questions, or, I think, I, okay, okay, I'll be around, but thank you for having me.
So it seems to be the hour when the kitchen is ready to serve us, and I looked at Robert very extensively before this because it's been a little bit of time. I will entertain a motion to recess for lunch. Heather says so moved, and then we have a second. Kate Dodge, all those in favor of taking a recess for lunch and coming back by at least 1:30, please indicate by saying "aye." Aye, and all those opposed, please say "nay."
Can, sorry, Meg, to interrupt. Can we just quickly, because she's in the room now, the Community Service Award went to Hannah Pick. I see that Hannah is here. Could we just quickly recognize Hannah? Now it's lunch.
We are now resuming post-lunch, having had lovely food to eat. Some people have got some brownies, I hope. We will now turn to Article 8. This is an important moment. We need quiet, please. Otherwise, you won't know what you're voting on. It'll be just like you're talking on your cellphones or something, or getting texts in your back pocket. Article number eight, shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Putney Community Center from municipal and educational taxation on the improvements of pertinences and land located at 10 Christian Square, Lot 305123, for a period of five years, beginning April 1st, 2023, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 3832 Subsection 7? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from the select board, and Michael Wells is giving us a second. It has been moved and seconded to discuss Article 8, which I'm going to repeat, especially since the hubbub is still to be diminished. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Putney Community Center from municipal and educational taxation on the improvements of pertinences and land located at 10 Christian Square, Lot 305123, for a period of five years, beginning April 1st, 2023, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 38327? Would somebody like to speak on the article to give us a sense? Nancy Olson, are you able to come to the mic, or do you want a mic brought to you?
This would be a renewal because the community center already has that, so this isn't anything new.
Great, thank you very much for that explanation. Does anybody have a question about Article 8? Would anybody like to speak against Article 8? Okay, it appears that the voters are ready to vote. We are now voting on Article 8. All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 8 is passed. We are now moving to Article 9. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Putney Community Center from municipal and educational taxation on the improvements of pertinences and land located at 39 Sandhill Road, Lot 070340, for a period of five years, beginning April 1st, 2023, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 38327? Do I have a motion? So moved. So moved. Do we have a second from the floor? And we'll go with Nancy Storo. It has been moved and seconded, and we are now ready to discuss. Shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Putney Community Center from municipal and educational taxation on the improvements of pertinences and land located at 39 Sandhill Road, Lot 070340, for a period of five years, beginning April 1st, 2023, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 38327? Would somebody like to speak on this motion? I have a hand in the back. Heather, can you give us your full name, too? And I just wanted to mention to people, it's useful if you are able to get close to the mic. If anybody at any time can't hear someone speaking, please go like this, and then I will see what I can do to make sure you're able to hear. And just a reminder to direct comments to Madam Moderator.
All right. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My question is, is that later on in the agenda, there is a non-binding article regarding this property, and I want to know how this motion affects that.
Great question. Is there somebody who can answer Heather's question?
Yeah, it doesn't affect it because the non-binding article, as you noted, is non-binding, and essentially it approves the town to explore the process of purchasing this parcel from the community center. So regardless of whether the community center were to hold on to it or the town were to own it, it would be tax-exempt either way, so it's sort of a moot point. But just to point out, for those who might know, this parcel is the piece of land called, referred to as Cooper's Field, which is the, it's the softball area on Sandhill, as well as roughly 10 acres surrounding it. And as Nancy said about the other community centerpiece, this is, this is a renewal. So it's already, it's been approved every five years for as long as I can remember.
Does anybody have a question? A question in the back. Mary, can you get a mic just so we can hear you, Mary?
It's not really a question, but I have heard a rumor that the town well is also on this property. Is that true?
Can somebody answer Mary's question about the town well?
That is correct.
Are there any other questions having to do with Article 9? Would anybody like to speak against Article 9? It appears that the voters are ready to vote on Article 9. Okay, it's now before us. Article 9, shall the voters of the town of Putney exempt the Putney Community Center from municipal and educational taxation on the improvements of pertinences and land located at 39 Sandhill Road, Lot 070340, for a period of five years, beginning April 1st, 2023, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 38327? All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." It appears that once again the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 9 has passed. We'll now move to Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second from the floor? Looks like Annie Beekman is our second. It is now on the floor for the voters to discuss Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? Does anybody want to speak to explain this particular article? Josh?
This is, we haven't typically voted on this, and that's because of the good attention paid to it by Karen, that you're seeing it this year. This is essentially a formality to allow the town treasurer to do the business of the town treasurer, and we are supposed to, by statute, vote on it annually. So that's what we're doing. We just haven't done that in the past because we weren't paying attention to it.
Great. Nothing like a pandemic to get people to really up their game. Fantastic. Does anybody have any questions about Article 10? Yes, Elizabeth Stead.
I don't know what the procedure is right now, but in the past, I remember if you had a delinquent tax and it was collected, that the collector got a percentage of it. And I'm hoping that's not the case because it was like mind-boggling, but I know that was way in the past.
Great, a great historical question. Is there someone who can answer? Yes, Karen?
I will add to that, Elizabeth. As a delinquent tax collector, which I'm contracted to do, I do not get any percentage. So in this article, it's for best practices and for checks and balances, so as a delinquent tax collector, I'm not collecting current taxes, so, but now, no extra money for me.
Okay, so there we have an answer. Are there any other questions about Article 10? Anybody wish to speak against Article 10? Seeing no hands, it appears that we're ready to vote on Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA Section 4791 to collect current taxes? All those, oh, excuse me? Yeah? Oh, we've already moved and seconded, so we're totally good on that, but good to pay attention to these things. Thank you. All those in favor, please indicate by saying "aye." All those opposed, please indicate by saying "nay." Once again, it appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 10 is passed. We will now move to Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three installments, with the due dates being the third Friday in the month of August, November, and February, by physical delivery to Town Hall, delivery to Town Hall postmarked, or by online payment on or before that date? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Elizabeth, you want to second this one? Elizabeth Stead seconds Article 11 is now before the voters to discuss. Shall the voters of town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three installments, with the due dates being the third Friday in the month of August, November, and February, by physical delivery to Town Hall, delivery to Town Hall postmarked, or by online payment on or before that date? Would someone like to speak on behalf of Article 11? I'm looking at the floor, and there is somebody in the back, or does the select board want to take this first? The gentleman in the back has moved to the select board. Somebody wish to answer why this article?
Again, this is best practice that our town manager has implemented for the first time this year.
Okay, great. Does anybody have a question? Question in the back?
Bob Meyer. I'm just curious as to why that we're still collecting it three times a year, not four times a year? I know that the three times, I believe, was because of the agricultural nature of Putney at the time, but I'm just, with everything financially so strapped, might it be easier for people to pay taxes if it was quarterly rather than three times a year?
And I want to make sure you're not making an amendment. This is, this is a question.
Yes, a question.
Select board, or town manager?
Very good question. I contemplated looking at a four-payment throughout the year to help people, especially through COVID. I can't make that change, and neither can the board. It has to be voters. At some point, maybe that'll happen. It's, it's totally up to the community.
I have a hand up here, Tom Ehrenberg. Can you use a mic, sir? Remembering to address your questions to Madam Moderator.
Madam Moderator, good afternoon to you.
Thank you.
It used to be two payments, and it was changed back in the '70s when Jordan Cole presented an article to make it three to ease payments and to spread it out, particularly around the time when people also were spending money on fuel oil. But we can make it as many number of payments as we want.
Tom Ehrenberg, are you suggesting an amendment to the article?
No, I like three. Three is a nice sort of round number, you know, it's prime, it's, but I don't, I'm easy.
Easy, but not a full amendment. Okay, we have a hand in front. Easy, but not a full amendment. Okay, we have a hand in front. Laura Chapman.
Karen, sorry, Madam Moderator, would it be easier or more difficult or just the same to switch to four payments for the administrative office?
Great question. And is there somebody who wishes to answer that? Karen, thank you.
Thank you, Laura, for your question. It will create a little more work for my staff. But as they get more proficient in collecting tax money, and we do have online payments now, we have ECHs. So it is, it's better, it's more efficient. I think it's worth asking the community, the whole community, if four payments would be considered. I mean, we can look at this, revisit it next year at town meeting, or at a special town meeting.
Great. And we have two hands in the back. Jim, I think I saw your hand first.
Jim Oliver, I just want to be sure that I understand that this is this policy as it is now because it appears from this that if you, sorry, that's okay, if you post, if you put in your, if the check is, goes to the post office and is postmarked on or before the date, then it's okay. That's not currently the policy, is it?
Is there somebody who can answer Jim's question? Yes, Karen?
So Jim, there is some confusion, and this article right here will define that if it is in the mail and postmarked before the due date, it will not be late.
Great. So any questions? Or Steve, sorry, you had your hand up, and then we'll go to Janice Baldwin.
I was not here in the 70s, but I do remember a town meeting, and I think I was actually running sound, so I was paying attention. There was a vehement argument for twice a year, and there was a vehement argument for four times a year. And the argument was, it was so big that it came like a whammy when it arrived just twice a year. And the other complaint was if it happened four times a year, every time you turn around, taxes were due, and people didn't want to do it that way. And I know I reasoned, well, there's a number in between two and four, and it divides into 12. And I pointed that out, and somehow it evolved in my town meeting time lifespan that it became three, and it seems to have a, it's not at a bad time each, each time that it wound up falling on.
Okay, great. We got a little more legislative history of how we have three installments. Janice Baldwin.
Thank you, Janice Baldwin. I have a question, Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I just wanted to make note that if we do amend this, from my point of view, it would seem that we need to say when it's going to be effective, and the town, I guess, could decide how much time the administration staff need to make this adjustment and also to figure out budgeting, rather than having, be effective immediately.
So Janice Baldwin, do you wish to make an amendment?
Not until I know what year would be best for the town administration.
Great. Excellent. Lisa Papazian in the back, can you get to a mic? There's an amendment floating here, but it's been, no.
Lisa Papazian, Madam Moderator, I don't have an amendment. But I am hearing between the words from Karen, and she's right, that perhaps this is more appropriate for a Australian ballot item so that everyone gets the chance to vote on it than the group here.
And that's not an amendment to change this, but to put on the radar for people.
Just in terms of a change.
Yeah.
This is status quo.
Right. Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to speak against Article 11? It appears that the voters are ready to vote on Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize payment of real property taxes for the ensuing year in three installments, with the due dates being the 3rd Friday in the month of August, November, and February, by physical delivery to Town Hall, delivery to Town Hall postmarked, or by online payment on or before that date? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 11 is passed. We are now moving on to Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Do we have a second from the floor? Elizabeth Christie is the second. It is now before the voters. Shall the voters of town of Putney authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceeding? Would somebody like to give a backstory or explain Article 12? Josh Laughlin, thank you.
I gotta get my last chances in here, you know? This, this also, we have exercised this ability to do this in the past, and we have not added on as an article for the same reason as the last two articles. So thanks to Karen for putting this in front of us. This is our common practice. We tend not to, we have the option statutorily to put delinquent properties that have been delinquent for more than a year up for sale. We don't exercise that. We bring it out to two years, and then try, and the delinquent tax collector in particular really goes out of, in this case, her way to try and help people catch up with their payments as best as possible to prevent tax sales. But we typically have anywhere from three to five properties that come up for tax sale annually. And the town, if there's a reason the town should own it, we are able to bid if we want to. Otherwise, it sells to a private entity. That, then the taxpayer has 12 months to pay it off before it's actually conveyed, the deed is conveyed. So, but again, this is a statutory aspect that we are just bringing before you because it's a formality to bring it before you.
Great. Questions? Let's go to Ann in the back.
Moderator.
Yeah.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Can you just say your full name for Ann?
Ann Carey.
Thank you.
I just had a question about with tax foreclosed property, whether before it has, before it has been put up to bid or for sale, whether or not the town might want to consider whether it was an appropriate property for some kind of affordable housing, might be sold, I don't, I don't quite know how that would work. And the other thing to consider, if it were vacant land within an interior forest area, which the state is, has programs to try to protect, whether there might be some discussion of the town itself keeping some of those properties that are conveyed to an appropriate entity.
And Ann, if I'm hearing you correctly.
This is just a question or suggestion. It's not an amendment.
It's not an amendment. You knew where I was going to go with that. Would anybody be able to answer Ann's question?
In the past, as I said, we have occasionally looked at properties that we think there might be a reason for the town to own them. And we have, in fact, the other thing that happens from time to time is that properties don't sell at tax sale, and then the town, by default, if they're not redeemed by the landowner or the taxpayer, the town by default inherits them. We then, we just recently had an example of this, and we put it on the open market. And I can't remember exactly what that led to right now. But in my experience, Ann, it's been pretty rare that there have been properties that make sense for us to try to pursue for a whole number of different reasons. Also, we have to decide a budget for what we would be willing to bid, and if we are outbid by a private citizen, then they are entitled to that. So we do tend to consider the properties and what we should do with them. That's a select board discussion, and, you know, it's always warned. So if public has input into that, that's always helpful, too. But we, it's been very rare, in my experience, that we have found a piece that it made sense for us to purchase.
Are there any other questions about Article 2? Yes, Jamie Quantow in the back.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Jamie Quantow, Putney. I just wanted to ask, I heard you said three to five properties. And so I was curious, what are some of the strategies for families who are, or individuals who can't pay their property taxes as taxes go up? And what are some of the things that we're currently doing to support folks staying in their homes and on their property? So would you, could you outline some of those things before their default to the town?
Is, is there somebody on the select board who could answer Jamie's question?
Oh, thank you, Madam Moderator.
You're welcome, Jamie. Town manager Karen stepping forward.
So Jamie, the process is, people are notified if they're going to go to tax sale. And they get like three notifications. And my first, what I'd like to do with people is offer them like a payment plan, and that protects them if I know that they're going to be able to get caught up. I always stress, if you're having a hard time, come see me, and we'll work an arrangement. The other thing, too, is there's state programs that protected people, you know, like the Vermont Housing Assistance Program, which helped people if they were delinquent in property taxes and/or municipal water or sewer. So we also had people go and apply for those programs. We couldn't apply for them because they need personal financial information, but we led them to the programs that, you know, might assist them. I don't like having a tax sale. I don't. And if a property goes to tax sale, there's legal fees associated with that once it goes to the attorney's office. If there is a mortgage on that property, the bank is going to be the first one to bid on that property. And sometimes the banks will try to work with the property owners. So it is hard times right now, and, you know, we do our best to send people to appropriate programs that they can get assistance.
Important footnote on that, though, is that we can't help people who don't come to us for help because it's not, it's, we're not able to. So it has to be, it has to be a cooperative effort between the taxpayer that is delinquent and the town.
Any other questions about Article 12? Does anyone wish to speak against Article 12? It appears that the voters are ready to vote on Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 12 passes. We will now move on to Article 13. Before I begin to read Article 13, just a update from the other discussion we had about funding for the Women's Freedom Center. It does turn out that the current title is Women's Freedom Center, and there was some confusion about that. But Article 13 is about a different social service. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital pursuant to the Putney Select Board Policy on Funding of Social Service Agencies? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I got one on the, from the select board, and Robin is our second. It is now in front of the voters of Putney. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital pursuant to the Putney Select Board Policy on Funding of Social Service Agencies? Would somebody like to speak to explain the reasoning behind Article 13? I'll go to Robin.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. After the earlier discussion that our wonderful moderator just referenced, I think we all know what this is about. It's not a request for a specific sum. It's a request to be added to the list of social agencies that the town gives some money to. Just a little bit of background, in addition to whatever funds are given, it helps an agency in applying for other funds, grants, and that sort of thing because it shows community engagement, which is why Grace Cottage is coming here. In fiscal year 2022, Grace Cottage served 655 Putney residents. That's not visits, that's individual residents. That's a quarter of our population. So it's fairly significant. They, in common with a lot of small hospitals, rely on donations, as well as what they get from reimbursement from insurance, including Medicare and Medicaid, which covers a lot of their patients, but does not cover full costs. They've been in existence for 70 years. They've served Putney residents for many years. This is the first time they've ever come to the town requesting any, any funds. As you may know, last year, Grace Cottage was named the best hospital in the area, the best emergency care, the best PT, the best pharmacy, having the best doctors, with apologies to our local excellent healthcare, and also the best place to work in this area. And they're very proud of the fact that they're consistently named among the top 20 hospitals in the country for patient satisfaction. That's 20 out of 15,000 hospitals, not 20%. They offer 24-hour emergency care, which you may all know, plus the inpatient care, rehabilitative care. They have a hospice care suite, which if anybody around here knows, somebody who needs to go into hospice has a family room with beds. They provide meals, as well as the usual lab diagnostic imagery. And they do contract with Dartmouth for some services, telehealth. But they're proud of their independence. They have no intention of merging with or buying or being bought by anybody. They want to serve the local community, which does include Putney. Let's see, in most cases, provider care is immediately available. That's not true everywhere. And they're very proud of the fact that you very rarely have to wait for an appointment there. Service to the community is a big part of their mission. I won't go into all of their, their services. I'm sure y'all are aware, can guess them. But just one thing, they do also have community healthcare teams, which among other things, do home visits that offer free services, such as nutritional and lifestyle guidance and education, diabetes coaching, substance abuse assessment, and help with coping with health insurance and connecting to community resources, such as assistance for food, fuel, and housing. And let's see, just to reiterate, they are an independent nonprofit 503(c) organization, and every little bit helps to make sure that they can continue to offer the services they do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, we have in the back, and then I'll move right down this line, Bert, and then Lionel.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My question is pretty simple. Would this, if this passes, would this go into this year's budget or would it roll into next year's budget? And if it's in this year's budget, does that create that ripple down as we found from the previous discussion?
And do you mind just stating your name in full for?
Bob Meyer.
Thank you, Bob. Looks like Eileen can answer that question.
Sorry, my cough and stuff on. So to answer the question, yes, I believe it will fall within this budget season. And yes, as our select board policy on funding social service agencies is written now, it would fall into one of those three categories.
I think the next question I had was Bert. If you could state your full name.
Bert Tepfer. One question just occurred to me at the very last moment, is if this is added to that list of, of agencies, will it decrease the appropriation then to everyone else? Correct?
Is there somebody who can answer that question? Nodding, is nodding?
Sounds like it.
Nodding doesn't count? The answer is yes.
It would decrease all of the other allocations within the category that it fell into?
Well, and the total, of course. The total would still be the same, but it would have to divvy it up differently.
Percentage wise, yeah.
I would like to point out, as I was seeing this as a recommendation, that there is no such allocation for Brattleboro Memorial Hospital. And I was wondering how that came to be, since that is our primary referral hospital for this area. If you, if you have an emergency and get sick and want, and need to go somewhere, you go to Brattleboro, where, which is the local catchment area for this town. So I'm kind of, find it kind of strange that we're going to recommend funds to essentially the hospital that isn't the primary care service area for our town. So that sounds a little odd to me, and I was wondering why that would be.
Great, that's a great question. I'm wondering, is there somebody who can answer Bert's question of why is Grace Cottage getting this special attention and not BMH? Heather, did you want to answer that in the back?
Um, sorry, I'm not that tall. To my understanding, that in order to be considered for the monetary amount, you have to first request it. B, the, the second part of that is that BMH is not necessarily the default medical care facility for the area. You do have a choice in which one you go to.
Right. And the next person in line, in terms of going to the mic, I think was Lionel, and then it's Laura, and then up to Jeanette.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Lionel Chute. Yeah, so I, I tend to always want to understand the whole picture. And obviously, the next warrant item is going to be the same kind of thing. My assumption was that this would fall into Group B, being an agency based outside of Putney, providing significant level of service to Putney residents. I suppose it could be also potentially be a C, but financially, there's a big difference between the two. And then jumping ahead to the next item, I'm assuming that Next Stage would be a Group A, because it's a Putney-based agency, although I suppose it could be a B in another way of thinking as well. And so thinking about the conversation we had earlier regarding the question, you know, is this an appropriate way to be making these decisions as far as not only who we want to fund, but who effectively, who we're going to be discounting by adding more people at this time? It seems to me like the sequence is a little confusing, that we've already approved the budget, the budget had these names listed at these amounts, and now we're sort of retroactively being asked to consider adding some more folks to the pie, recognizing that it's going to adjust the other members of the respective group that it gets put into. So it feel, it feels to me like an awkward system. And so my question is, are all of these recipients determined by us? Or are they determined by the board? Is this something that we, by statute, are expected to approve or, or not? Are we being consistent? Thank you.
Yeah, great. So Lionel, I heard two questions in there. And one is if we could get some sense of whether it is category A, B, or C? And then the other question is, who decides these formula, if I'm hearing that correctly? Eileen Chu.
This is part of why the select board discussed revamping this policy. To answer the first question, most likely Grace Cottage would go into category B, but that would be a decision among the board at a later date. And to answer the second question, we had the option, once they petitioned us to, to be added to this policy, we did have the option to just add them. But since we knew that we were about to go into a substantive discussion about this policy, we felt it was better to bring it out to the voters.
Great. I have on my list of people who are waiting to speak on Article 13, Laura Chapman, I think you're next in the queue.
A couple of points and then a question, very quickly. One, having worked for social service agencies that have applied for this process, though, I do think there's a lot of room for improvement. I have heard anecdotally that this is one of the best processes for social service allocation within the region. So just so you know that. Two, I apologize for my miscommunication over the Women's Freedom Center. And three, do we have any data on how much service Brattleboro Memorial Hospital provides versus how much service Cottage Hospital provides to our town? I heard how many people have been seen, how many individuals, but I'm curious as to what the service records are for both organizations.
Great. So is there anybody here who can answer the question of making a comparison between Brattleboro Memorial Hospital and Grace Cottage for Laura's question? Heather is coming to answer that question. So we'll see what Heather, yes.
I'm not sure if it's a substantive answer because of what Grace Cottage does have to offer versus what Brattleboro has to offer. Grace Cottage does have a lot of rehab, physical rehab, if you go for orthopedic surgery. That's kind of their niche, whereas they don't have an actual ortho department. They do have an emergency department, they don't have OB. Any of those can be transferred out to BMH or Dartmouth or Keen. So you may have some overlap in those numbers, where you initially choose to be transported, if you go via emergency, to Grace Cottage Hospital, where they don't have the services to offer you, you'll be transferred out to another facility. I don't know if that answers the question completely, but I think it might give a little more insight.
Great, thank you. Jeanette has also been waiting, and then we'll go to Jim.
I don't want to stand in right in front of Elizabeth. Thanks, Jeanette White. So I, I am actually not going to talk about the process here and what we're doing. I'm going to speak against this amendment. And the reason I'm going to do that is-
Or this article.
I mean, this article.
Yeah, thank you.
The reason I'm doing that is we have, and we all know it, a broken healthcare system. It, it isn't even a system, but our healthcare in this country and in Vermont is broken. We have 14 hospitals in the state, and they're all struggling. Every one of them struggles. They don't get enough reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid. And most of, to be honest, most of the, or many of the patients are Medicare patients. I love Grace Cottage Hospital. I've worked with them for years as a legislator. I've, my family uses them sometimes, and they're a great hospital. They are, we are not in their catchment area necessarily. And Grace Cottage and BMH do have relationships. They have contracts with each other, they work with each other. For example, as was just pointed out, Grace Cottage doesn't have a maternity unit, but Brattleboro does, so that's where you'd go. If the reason, first of all, $737 or $4,000 is not going to make diddly squat difference to their budget. It's a little tiny amount. It's not going to do anything to their budget. But it would impact the budget of Putney Family Services and all the others on that list, wherever, depending on where we put them. If the reason, as somebody pointed out, was, is because in order to get other grants, they need to have, be able to show community support, then we can show them community support by having a resolution and having it passed by the town, saying, we support Grace Cottage and all their endeavors to get grants from different places. But I, I do not support this. If we start, if we give to Grace Cottage, then maybe next year we'll give to BMH. And we have a BMH family practice right here in Putney, right on Main Street. Maybe we should give to them. So I actually am opposing this article. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. We just had a clear statement in opposition to Article 13, and I appreciate that, because the voters cannot weigh and consider any of these articles unless we hear good arguments on both sides. So having just heard an argument against Article 13, I will open up for a article in favor of Article 13. Is that, no, is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor of Article 13 who has not spoken before? Is there anybody who has a question? Swift? I, I know, and Jim, I know you've been waiting. I'm going to give it to Swift, and then we'll move to Jim.
I just wanted to add a point of clarification, that there are organizations in Group C that do serve 25% of Putney, and they're, we're not currently going by the existing policy. For example, SUSSU, The Root, Out in the Open, when they were voted in by the select board last year, the SUSSU, from my memory, did declare that they, 25% of their services do go to Putney residents. So it's so hard to be in the weeds here, because we're messing around here. But I also would put another piece against the article with this curiosity of huge organizations that have very large budgets, where it's a drop in the bucket in comparison to some of these that are in Group C, that would, if they were in Group B, it would change their entire budget, and they could hire someone part-time. So, thank you.
So that sounded like a little bit against Article 13?
Yes.
Yes. So I've heard two strong arguments against Article 13. Would somebody like to make an argument in favor of Article 13? It looks like the voters may be ready to vote. We will be voting on Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Grace Cottage Family Health and Hospital pursuant to the Putney Select Board policy on funding of social service agencies? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those against, please indicate by saying nay. It is the opinion of the moderator that the nays have it? The nays have it, which means that Article 13 has not passed. We will now move to Article 14. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Next Stage Arts Project for community blood drives, space sharing for Putney Food Co-op, and Vermont Council on Rural Development? Hosting public offerings, including the Osher Lecture Series, community meals, and other community services pursuant to the Putney Select Board policy on funding of social service agencies? Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second? And Sue Cokely is our second. The discussion on Article 14, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Next Stage Arts Project for community blood drives, space sharing for Putney Food Co-op, and Vermont Council on Rural Development? Hosting public offerings, including the Osher Lecture Series, community meals, and other community services pursuant to the Putney Select Board policy on funding of social service agencies? It's been moved and seconded, restated by the moderator. It is in front of the people. Who wishes to explain Article 14, or give us some sense of why it's here? And yes, that would be Heather, I think. No.
Madam Moderator, select board members, and Putney voters, my name is Heather Brubaker. I may be new to many of you. I'm a relatively new member of the town, and this is my first town meeting. So thank you for welcoming me and my family to Putney, and also thank you for your careful and thoughtful deliberation of this article and of the other ones that I've heard today. It's a really inspiring thing to be a part of this process. So I'm a PCS parent with two kids in the school. I've been living in East Putney for the last two and a half years, and I'm also a board member of Next Stage Arts Project. And specifically, I'm the chair of our Community and Engagement Committee. And this is a committee that we formed a few years ago specifically to really deeply demonstrate our commitment and the seriousness with which we take our responsibility as an arts organization that is rooted in Putney and here to serve the people who live here and in our surrounding communities. So in the last few years, under the leadership of our executive director Keith Marks, who's right here, we have had, experienced a period of enormous growth and innovation. I hope that many of you have had opportunities to come to Next Stage or to visit the bandwagon series, to see our shows, to participate in some of our events, or that your children or grandchildren have experienced some of our programming here at PCS. But we believe that Next Stage, at its root, is a community organization whose mission goes beyond arts programming. And we demonstrate that commitment to Putney in a variety of ways. One of the ways that we demonstrate that commitment is by supporting access to our programming. So we have library passes at every library in Wyndham County to try and make sure our programming is accessible. We also donate tickets through the Putney Food Shelf, because we believe that art is food for the soul. And so we try to make our ticketing as accessible as possible for the community. We also keep our ticket prices artificially low and make up our, our budget in other ways in order to make sure that our ticket prices stay in a range that is affordable for as many people as we can reach in our community. We have a roster of youth and family programs that is long and growing. I hope some of you got to see it on the board in the back. And recently, we celebrated the return of the community suppers, thanks to Simone and Mike and the Community Supper Committee, and we're so excited to be a part of that effort. We also have a range of partnerships with small businesses and nonprofits here in Putney, and we regularly donate our space to a wide range of community organizations. And it's really our hope to continue expanding our presence in terms of what our space can provide for the community. So that is a very brief explanation of, of what we do and what our hopes are for our relationship with Putney. But I just want to emphasize that we're grateful for your trust, and we are grateful for your presence, and thank you very much.
Great. Is this, is there somebody who wishes to ask a question about Article 14? Mike?
No, I specifically have a question, but I'd like to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll take one in favor, and then I'll, I'll go looking for the opposition.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to speak in favor of this because- I'd like to speak in favor of this because of the work I've done over the years, helping to build community in this, and realizing that we want to do that, we need places to be in community together. And going back to when Next Stage was the Federated Church, it was, it was a hub of the town, from their weekly senior meals to later on, the Christmas Eve events they had there. And it was a regular place, and it was unfortunate that the church had to get laid down, but it's wonderful that we have Next Stage that has stood up, and not just as a, as a hub of the local art community, but they're increasing outreach to community. And Heather mentioned the community meals. After we had the BRCD meeting here, and, which included a meal with hundreds of people, a group of us got together and said, "I think we're ready to get back to doing the community meals in person." And, and last month, we had the first one, and served 250 meals. This Friday, the Putney School is going to be providing the food, and y'all come, because we want to be in community together. And having a place to be in community is essential. And I don't know where on the scope, on the scale of this, that you want to put them, but I suggest it's a worthwhile investment in our community to add them to the list, because they are becoming more and more an essential part of the fabric of our community. So I thank Next Stage and all the people there, and I hope that the voters can support this.
Great. We just heard a strong argument in favor of Article 14. Does anybody have a question or wish to speak against Article 14? I'm going to go to the back, Jim has been waiting.
Madam Moderator, I want to, I don't want to repeat myself too much from what I said earlier today, but I think it's important to be consistent. And again, I have taken advantage of what Next Stage has to offer, to wonderful places doing wonderful things, as are all of the other agencies that are listed here. The problem, we have a problem of dividing the pie up. We have a pie, and we're dividing it up into pieces, and at least for this year, the pie is, is as big as it is, and the pieces will get smaller, the, each piece will be smaller when we add more pieces. What we need, I think I'm hearing from the, the group here, is more pie. We need a bigger pie. And in order for there to be a bigger pie, there has to be a decision by the town to put more money into social service contributions by the town. That's not something that's going to happen at this meeting. The Select Board is said they're in the process of thinking through how to revise this policy. I support that greatly and think that one of the outcomes of that might be, next year, a larger pie that can be divided into pieces that will be satisfying, more satisfying to the people in this room. Again, I find it very difficult, impossible, in fact, to weigh the good works of one agency against the good works of another agency, and come out with a, an objective decision that we can all agree on. That's not going to happen. We have to do the best we can. But if anything, we need more pie.
Great. So we've just heard an argument against. And Lionel, did you have an argument for or a question? Neither. Okay, so I'll put you on hold for a moment, because, because I'm going back and forth. Yeah. So I'm going to point to Keith. I'm assuming you want to make an argument for Article 14.
Madam Moderator, you are correct. My name is Keith Marks. I am the Executive Director of Next Stage. I know some of you, COVID kept me from meeting a lot of you. Moved here, I have two, two young kids here at Putney Central. I currently serve on the ARPA Committee for the town. I'm on the Board of the Governor's Institute and on the Board of SEVIDS. Since arriving here from Florida three years ago, it has been an overwhelming sense of gratitude and appreciation for this community. It is deeply rooted in a deep sense of communal feelings. Even, this is my first town meeting, just like Heather's, and it is overwhelming to see this in action. I will speak kind of obviously in favor, but I just kind of want to bring some things to light. First of all, the intention of, of creating a Next Stage was in response to the church folding, and the overwhelming feeling was that the community did not want to lose a sense, a shared space, a shared meeting space, a place where memorial services and weddings and birthdays and meetings and events could happen. The second piece to the creation of Next Stage was serving the downtown core. Great Recession, 2008 was happening, downtown was, businesses were closing, and so Next Stage was seen as an opportunity to draw people to come downtown. I would say that Next Stage has lived into those promises quite, quite well. The other thing that I kind of want to mention is that this is not Next Stage coming to help support the concerts we do. This is coming with a sense that we are viewing ourselves as a critical component to village life in this community, with a sense of community service, with a sense of social service. You know, if, for, for those of you on the outside looking in, yes, Next Stage charges money for our tickets, but I will let you know that if a show at Next Stage breaks, even we consider it a very successful event, ticket sales only make up about 25 to 30% of our budget. Like many of you were saying earlier about inflation, cost of doing business here is going up, and we are having to find creative ways to continue to offer services, not just in the artistic way, but in the community social services way. We are exploring new funding options with granters, we are asking more from our, our existing donors, and we're growing, but yet there is a disconnect. Ticket prices across the border around this country for arts events are going up. It's not unfair to say that ticket prices are 35, excuse me, $35, $40 for a ticket, and that's just in North Hampton. I'm not talking about New York. So we're trying to create an organization that is, that is conscious of the community that we live in. Just, just to give you a sense, we've donated space in the past year to the Putney Central School Middle School Rock Band. We're doing a fundraiser at the end of April for the Fire Department. The Lion King will be happening at Next Stage. The Food Shelf just did a training. We hosted a fundraiser for RODs when, after the arson. The Co-op meets monthly for their board meetings. The Planning Commission was there, and they'll continue to. PCS is doing Teen Nights that we're hosting. We've had calligraphy classes, Tai Chi classes. We donated our kitchen space. We do community suppers. We just did a project with Putney Community Cares, Forest for Learning, and the PCS Art School. We hosted Gordon Hayward for a free talk, the Ali Series from UVM. We do quarterly blood drives with the Putney General Store. We are participants in the Halloween celebration. The Community and Engagement Committee hosted a holiday cookie swap. We brought Weston Playhouse for free performances. We launched a Meet Your New Neighbor series. My list goes on and on. I'm, I'm making the case that Next Stage is not just an arts organization where we host concerts. It is, we are trying to be seen as a critical piece of this community, and this is why we're coming. Three years ago, two years ago, I don't think we would have been in this position to put our name on the hat for town funding. I do think that we are providing a lot more service than what we're asking for. So thank you guys for considering, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. So now we've just had a strong argument in favor of Article 14. Does anybody have a question, or would somebody else like to speak against Article 14? Elizabeth, you haven't spoken yet.
I just have a question. We are in the process with Rural Development to talk about the different parts of our town and how we're going to develop it, and one of the parts that I have observed is the community center. And I'm observing also that, like, the Catholic Church is no longer in use, and there's other spaces that are not in use. And I wonder if we put money into this, we should remember there's other places that might be appropriate, that also should be developed, so that we have some of the buildings that are underutilized being utilized. So if we gave this chunk, then they would be automatically on the list, and it would be hard to bring anybody else in, because they would have basically been the gold standard. And I think that it would be nice if we could wait to put this out to the, to the town until we get the town plan, or whatever it's called, the Putney Future, settled. Plus, it would be nice in relationship to getting the town plan complete, to see if this is appropriate. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So that's an argument against Article 14. I will now hear one in favor. Somebody who hasn't spoken yet? Let's see. I think, Robin, you have, I'm going to go to Sue. Maybe you haven't spoken on this one, Robin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and hello, Select Board again. I just want to say that Next Stage, I'm speaking in support. Next Stage has offered an absolutely essential service to the Planning Commission to do something we've never done before, which is to invite the community to come talk to us about the future of Putney in our town plan. We have a series of meetings scheduled between now and actually July, and if we did not have the Next Stage facility, I don't know that we could do this. So it's essential that they provide this service, and I'm very hopeful that by providing a little bit of money, and it would just be a little bit of money, they can use that to leverage funding from other sources because they serve this community service. And I, I think it will be a leveraging thing, but at the same time, I agree, we need a bigger pie for these social services.
Great. Thank you very much. We're getting strong arguments both for and against. The best thing you can have for deliberation. I'll look for an argument against. Lionel?
I, I can't say that it's an argument against, but I, but I, I just have, I think we need to think about this moment, because this is a, this is a pretty big deal in terms of how the town does its business. I, we, we became connected to Putney through Next Stage before the renovation, and we came in and we enjoyed some talent shows that were just amazing, with the ceiling peeling, and it, it, it was a deal clincher for me, as far as where I wanted to live, based on the community spirit that was present at the time. There's a certain finish now to the space by virtue of all the money that's gone into it, the reality, the fiscal realities that they have to deal with. The ticket prices aren't always that great. I, I don't feel that it's, I have great respect for the space, it's still incredibly important, but the reason I feel this is an important question is because I don't think of Next Stage as a social service agency. Perhaps it would like to be, but that's a very different business model from being an arts organization. The way it was, I think, is that it was a sort of a facility that was developed internally, locally, from blood and sweat, where folks were able to come and make use of the space in a variety of ways. That, that may not be possible forever, just given the capitalist reality that we're in. But a social service agency is a very different thing than an arts community agent, an arts facility. And, and so just going back to the page 43, in the social service agency appropriation, I have to assume that this would be Group A. And if you look in Group A, there are only three agencies that the town is basically underwriting. There's the Community Cares, there's the Community Center, and there's the Food Shelf. The Food Shelf and the Community Center are sharing space, and so in a way, you could think of that as, I recognize that they're separate organizations, but, but there's a, there's something tying that funding together. So we've got about $13,900 going to the Community Cares facility, and another $13,900 going to the combined efforts of the Community Center and the Food Shelf. And so historically, the Community Center would have been the place where those meals would have happened. I believe there were meals there as recently as a few years ago. If we're shifting to Next Stage for things like blood drives, which could be happening in the fire station, then, then we should be thinking about that. We should all be thinking about that, including Next Stage, as far as what role do we really want Next Stage to have in town? And so I just feel that it's a big step, and if we take that step, let's remember what we decided, and then remember that we have a vested financial interest in the Next Stage as being a social agency for the town.
Great. Thank you. We'll take that as an argument against Article 14. We're getting some strong arguments on both sides. I'm now looking for an article in favor. Jeanette, did you want to ask a question? If so, you'll need to go to a mic.
So I'm, this isn't, I think the for and against, and for and against is a little bit tough, just because there are maybe suggestions, and I think that's what I'm going to do right now. First of all, I want to say that when I spoke against the Grace Cottage Amendment or Article, one of the things I forgot to say about our broken healthcare system is that it is not the responsibility of property tax to support our healthcare system. I forgot to say that, so I just wanted to make sure. So I do support the town supporting Next Stage. I think that the, what is happening there is amazing. It's, it is really a center, and the meals that are being provided, for example, I don't think, because I also support the Community Center, but I don't think those community meals could happen at the Community Center in the same way because of the, the kitchen. The kitchen at Next Stage is a nice, big kitchen that was designed for church gatherings, and so it's there. The kitchen at the Community Center could not serve 250 meals. So I, it's, it's not one against the other, they're both important. What I'd like to say, and I don't even know if this is possible, Madam Moderator, you will have to tell me if I can do this, because I do understand the issue of adding people through this process, and then it reducing the allocations to the other people on that list. So what I'm going to propose, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do it or not, I'm going to propose that we increase the general fund budget by $4,000, not allocate, not put it on the social services, but that we, it be allocated to, or the recommendation that it go to Next Stage, and that in the process, the Select Board process next year of relooking at the whole process for social service support, that this is one of the things they should look at, and they should also look at increasing the pie, as has been pointed out. So I don't know if that's possible, or if, since we've already passed the budget, if I can even do that.
Right. So be, thank you for that question, and I'm looking at my parliamentarian as well, but if you wanted to go back to Article 5, which is what we already voted on, I believe that train has left the station the minute that we moved from Article 5 to Article 6. However, what, I'm looking at Tom Ehrenberg. Oh, so we have an amendment. Tom Ehrenberg, are you making an amendment?
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will, if, if it works, I will.
Tom, can you go to the mic? I'm sorry, can you go to the mic, because everybody's hanging on your words right now?
Yes. I'll sit down and wait until, and we see what Tom says, and then maybe I'll have something.
If, if somebody did want to do that, it would, a vehicle for doing that would be what used to be special appropriation article. to be special appropriation articles in the warning. That is, we could eliminate the social service appropriation, make it a general appropriation, and then it would be added on to the appropriation we already passed for the town. However, that's not really what was warned. What was warned was folding it into the bottom line that we already have. So I think probably where we can't do what Jeanette wants to do, although we could certainly recommend that the board consider it for next year.
Okay, so what I'm hearing Tom say, I just want to get this out, and then Josh, I'll turn to you, is that one possibility would work as an amendment to make a request on Article 14 to consider a certain dollar amount to be given to Next Stage in next year's budget? Am I getting that somewhat correct?
Sure. Again, that changes the nature of the article, but it's in the spirit.
Yeah, we don't want to change the nature of the articles, then we move into, we didn't warn this properly. But in the spirit of the article, of concern for getting money to Next Stage, this might be an amendment, although a moderator would not make that amendment. I would need somebody else to make that amendment. Josh, I noticed you had your hand up earlier. Did you want to weigh in on this on a substantive or procedural level?
I guess more procedural, and I just have a question, Tom, and I'm not sure whether this is for you or otherwise, but my recollection is that we could, this could be amended to request the Select Board to allocate $4,000, but it would have to come out of our already budgeted general fund. So that is another vehicle to do this, but it would force the Select Board, or ask the Select Board, to take that money from somewhere in order to make that happen, because the budget has already been.
Do you want to go to a mic?
And that would just mean striking "social services" from the article.
Tom, are you making this amendment?
There's no dollar.
Okay, so I still don't have an amendment, but I have very good minds working hard, and I'm assuming everybody else, to figure out a way. Is there a possibility to amend Article 14 that will address some of these issues that people have raised?
I'll make the amendment to get it on the floor.
So Tom Ehrenberg is amending Article 14 and removing the language?
I will make the amendment to, just to get it before the body, and say, for Article 14, to authorize and then strike "social services" and add a $2,000 appropriation. So it would say, authorize a $2,000 appropriation to support blah, blah, blah.
So you're making an amendment?
That's my amendment.
And the amendment would be, would we be getting rid of anything after the comma, which includes pursuant to the Putney Select Board policy on funding of social service agencies? Would all that language be removed? People are nodding as if that makes sense. Many people are nodding.
Yes, correct. I didn't get to the end in my reading, I didn't. So yes, it would, other community services, period.
Okay, and so the way I have this now, if people want to follow along, that after we have the including line, community meals and other community services, to authorize $2,000 appropriation to Next Stage.
This is here next year. Let's get it all on one amendment.
What? I didn't hear you. Correct. So the amendment would be, the newly worded article would be, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a $2,000 appropriation to support Next Stage arts project, and so on? And then when it gets to OSHA lecture series, community meals, and so on, after community services, period, and strike the pursuant and everything that follows.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm now going to read. The amendment is on the floor, and I still need a second, but before I ask for a second, I'm going to read the language. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a $2,000 appropriation to support Next Stage art project for community blood drives, space sharing for Putney Food Co-op, and Vermont Council on Rural Development hosting public offerings, including the OSHA lecture series, community meals, and other community services, period? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and who was that?
Emily Peyton.
Emily Peyton is the second. It has been moved and seconded, we are now considering the amendment. That's what we're discussing. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment?
I have a question.
Or a question?
I have a question.
Okay, so I'm gonna go for, do you have a question, Jim? And you're standing right there at the mic? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question that has to do with the timing of this, which was brought up earlier. Are we talking about this year, or are we talking about next year? I apologize to Tom, I was trying to get that clarified before we had to go through an amendment or amendment process. But is, is it this year or next year?
So I'm gonna ask the Select Board, given this language, what would you say?
The way that I'm reading this article amended is that we are authorizing $2,000 from the already voted general fund budget to appropriate for Next Stage.
So the effect is, we would be, if we voted this amendment, we would be instructing the Select Board to include this $2,000 and find those $2,000 elsewhere in the budget and remove that funding.
Yes, we would have to take the $2,000 from the, from the already voted funds, the general fund budget.
Great. So we just had a question clarification. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment? If you have a question, if you would, Janice Baldwin has a question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Janice Baldwin, I don't see how this amendment solves the problem. Frankly, we're giving them, if we vote the $2,000 now, that's a one-time allotment, as I understand it. That does not give us, show the commitment that we have to the Next Stage as a volunteer and as a participant in so many of their offerings. I mean, just yesterday, you know, two things, yesterday and Sunday as well, so, and they were free. But I don't, I think my fundamental thing is, I don't see how the amendment can solve the long-term problem of, do we want to acknowledge Next Stage's commitment as, whatever you want to call it, a social service agency or an agency in the community that supports the community? To me, the easiest way to do it would be not actually to give them money this year, but, and if you could do it, amend.
And maybe, Janice, just because we're just discussing the amendment?
This is?
If we, if, yeah, so if you could hold off on that next statement for, when we find out what happens with the amendment?
Okay.
Unless you're doing an amendment to an amendment.
No, it's amending the original warning.
Yeah, great. So we're gonna just focus on the amendment, and we heard a strong case against the amendment as proposed. Is there somebody who wishes to speak for the amendment? Kate Dodge.
So my question is, for Keith or whoever.
Heather.
Thank you. You said in the beginning, when you were explaining the amendment, I mean, the article, that this wasn't about the arts part of your organization, but about the community services. And then Keith spoke about the difficulty in getting, you know, raising, the ticket sales didn't pay for the concerts. And I certainly understand that, I've been involved in arts organizations many times. But I'm wondering if you, whether it's the $2,000 or the, whatever the other, the original article, whether you would have a separate budget for this, so that it would just be used for these community services?
So Kate Dodge, I want to just make sure, because we're discussing the amendment, it sounds like you're asking Keith, what is his perspective on this amendment?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, on this amendment or the other one, but yes.
Yeah, but because we're, I really want to keep people very focused on the amendment, otherwise we might get confused what we're talking about.
I was hoping I wouldn't have to do it again.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Keith, you want to take advantage of that invitation?
I have another question, too.
Okay, is it about the amendment?
We can volley back and forth. So the conversation around the ticket sales is that, just the perspective, if you haven't been to Next Stage in the past two to three years, I could imagine why it would be confusing, right? If you only remembered it as a place to see a concert. And I think the argument we're making is that, in the past two to three years, we've created a separate committee inside of our board, we've reached out, and I should also mention about this pie, as my colleague Hannah at the Food Shelf and Ruby at Putney Community Cares, this was not done lightly. I reached out prior to and had conversations with about, about what this impact it would make.
And Keith, I'm sorry to interrupt you, it's just I want to make sure, because that was a very specific question about the amendment.
So, I'm sorry, can you reframe the question?
So the question is, I believe that Kate Dodge was wanting to get more information of how, should Article 14, the amendment pass, how would Next Stage make sense of that appropriation? Am I correct?
We can clearly, the value that I think we provide to this community would be clearly outlined in whatever funding that the town appropriated for Next Stage. We would be able to show that those funds were strictly used for community good and community service ideas.
I see.
Absolutely.
Great, so you would be able to dedicate that $2,000?
Yeah, we keep, we keep a running list of all of the community engagement work that we do, that we can show the value to the community of what we offer, which is, I would say, far more than $2,000 or even $4,000. But we'd be happy to outline those clear metrics to the Select Board.
Great. So we're still talking about the amendment, and just to remind everybody, it's moving the social service language out and creating an authorization of $2,000 based on the general fund. And you haven't spoken yet in the back, and I forgot your name.
It's all right, I'll tell you. Melanie Fletcher. At the beginning of the discussion, we were kind of hovering around the amount of 4,000, and all of a sudden it became 2,000. So I'm just wondering where that happened, maybe I was snoozing, I don't know. I'm just asking. So just, what was the origin of the $2,000?
I'm gonna go to Tom for that one, since, did you have a reason why you came up with $2,000 as the author of the amendment?
I just made it up.
Yeah, great.
The effect of the amendment is to spread, if we, if we wanted to allocate the money, it's to spread it throughout the general fund budget and not take money away from specific social service agencies. That's the only point of the amendment.
Great. And I'm hoping everyone understands that, that this was a technique that Tom used, so they were taking it out of the general fund and not just going to social services. So we're discussing the amendment, is, I've heard so far, questions, but nobody arguing for or against the amendment. Emily, you have your hand up in the back.
Can I propose an amendment to the amendment to change the amount to 4,000?
So we have a motion on the floor to change the amendment from 2,000 to 4,000. Emily, do you want to explain why you're doing that?
Because, as this gentleman said, they are giving far more value. They're right central, they've got all kinds of resources, and it's truly valuable, particularly in these days, to have a place where we can go and meet and be. And it's the best one that I've seen in Putney, and I want to support it.
Okay, great, so, thank you. So I need a second now on the amendment to the amendment. We're just talking about, do you want to amend the amendment to $4,000? Do I have a second? Janice Baldwin is the second on the amendment to the amendment. We are now discussing just the $4,000 question, otherwise we're gonna lose track of everything. So we're very focused on the $4,000, and Emily Peyton has already given us a sense of why she thinks that amendment to the amendment is a good idea. Would somebody like to speak against the amendment to the amendment? Jeanne, who hasn't spoken yet?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I favor the 2,000 figure because I can imagine we could run it through the general fund and not have a major impact on a budget that we've been told has been, you know, pinched down to, to the nubs. So, you know, and I'm completely expecting this to come back next year. Yes, it's a one-time thing, so if we feel that support of Next Stage should be at a greater level, we can do that next year. But this year, we're going back to an already passed budget, where we've beaten it to death a little bit, and I just think it would be easier to find the funds in the general budget without doing harm to, say, road maintenance or something, if we stuck with the figure of two.
Great, thank you very much. We just heard an argument against the amendment to the amendment. Does somebody else want to speak in favor of the amendment to the amendment? Favor of the amendment to the amendment? Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie Kontrois. I have to go get the little one, so I have to say this quickly. Can you hear me? As a family with young children, I am tremendously appreciative of the work of Next Stage, and I support this amendment to the amendment, Madam Moderator.
Great, thank you very much. And we are now looking for an argument against the amendment to the amendment, the $4,000. Laura Chapman, did you want to speak against the amendment to the amendment?
Whew, my stomach's rolling, sorry. I work for the Putney Food Shelf, and so I feel a little torn about getting up here and speaking. This is a really complicated issue, and I think that it actually points to a much deeper issue that we have in this community of what is our community center, and how are we utilizing our community centers? That said, as the operations manager of the Putney Food Shelf, I can say without a doubt that Next Stage is a social service. They provide space to not only the town when the town needs it, and I mean, like Town Hall, when Town Hall needs it. They've provided space to us as a food shelf for our trainings. They have provided up to 10 tickets a week to our shoppers for free, which I can't tell you what the impact of that has been. It's a really beautiful thing to see when people can't afford to go and partake in the services that our town provides, that we're able to just give that to them, without any question. All of that to say, I did some quick math, and I don't like this approach of $4,000. I think that having been on the Select Board and knowing what a budget looks like, if it wasn't voted into the budget, it's going to take away from really needed services. And so, doing the quick math, if this Group A were divided into five, it would bring each of our shares down to $5,588.40. Again, as the operations manager for the Food Shelf, I'm like kicking myself to shut up right now, but I don't think that that $1,500 is going to break any one of our organizations. And I'm also counting on all of you to donate so that it doesn't break us. And I encourage all of you through this conversation to really think about, because in many ways, and I'm gonna say the unnamed thing in the room right now, Next Stage is replacing our community center. Our community center is outdated, it's a great home for the Food Shelf, I love it dearly, I consider it a second home right now. But Next Stage is offering things that they can't, and that's a really important conversation that needs to happen outside of this one. So I'm not in favor of this amendment.
Great, thank you very much for that clarity. I'll take an argument in favor of the amendment to the amendment. It looks like we may be able to vote on the amendment to the amendment. Elizabeth?
I have a proposal.
Can you use the mic, Elizabeth?
I have a question about, number one, where the 2,000 and 4,000 came from. I don't remember ever seeing it go by, number one. Number two, I'm looking at the next article, and it's the same kind of thing again, and we're gonna end up with this again and again and again. And I think we should just look back to the original one of this particular version of Next Stage, because basically Next Stage and the field are kind of like the Grace Cottage thing. And we're kind of splintering it up, and we need to understand.
thing, and we're kind of splintering it up, and we need to understand what we're doing in a bigger way. I'm not opposed to any of them, but I just think we need to look at all of them, plus what Laura just said, you know, the community center is being eclipsed by this. And we're not using the fire department as much as we could, and we're not using a lot of places as much as we could, because this is the newbie on the block, and it's shiny and new and wonderful, and they're doing a lot of good things, but not everybody goes there. A lot of people are more comfortable in the fire department or other places. So, I think we need to think about what we're doing in the bigger picture for the whole community, and in relationship to the Putney big plan that we're trying to do with rural development. So, I'm against this.
Great, thank you. It looks like, I've heard, I know, a number in a row against the amendment to the amendment, so I want to move it to a vote. What we are voting on is, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize $4,000 appropriation to support Next Stage Arts Project? And I'm not going to say the last part, because we're really just focusing on the dollar amount. All those in favor of the amendment, raising the appropriation of $4,000, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment to the amendment, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and the amendment to the amendment does not pass. We are now moving back to the amendment, which says, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a $2,000 appropriation to support Next Stage's arts project? And I won't read the rest. Are you all ready to vote? Okay, Jeanette? Oh, sorry, Bryce has also been waiting a very long time.
All right, so, I apologize if I screwed everything up. I thought I was trying to be helpful, and it turns out that I have completely screwed it up. So, if it were my, knowing what Laura just said about the Food Shelf, and maybe, I don't know if the Putney Community Center has the same feeling, and Putney Community Cares, which is a combination of Putney Community, or Putney Cares and Family Services, that's what it used to be, that's why it's got a double allocation here. If that, if they have talked about this and are comfortable with the Next Stage going into Group A, then I'm comfortable with that. And had this been my amendment, which I threw it out there, and that's where the $4,000 came from, Elizabeth, because I just said it, and I made it up, just as Tom made up too. But if this had been my amendment now, knowing how they feel, the other community services in Group A feel, I would withdraw this amendment completely, and go back to the original one that, but I can't withdraw the amendment, because I didn't make it.
That's fine, we're going to put it in front of the voters.
Right.
And so, right now, you have just spoken against the amendment.
Against the amendment, yes.
Okay, that's great to know. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment? Ruby, you haven't spoken yet. Ruby does not wish to speak. This is in favor of the amendment, and just to remind everybody, it's the amendment to authorize a $2,000 appropriation. Laura, do you wish to?
I just want to be clear.
Can you use the mic, please, Laura? Thank you.
I just want to be clear, I wasn't speaking for the Putney Food Shelf. I am the operations manager, but I have no idea if any conversations have taken place behind the scenes. I wasn't speaking for them, I was speaking for myself.
Great, okay. Anybody have any other questions about the amendment? Bryce, you've been so patient.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just had one question, since we've had two articles come up, you know, in support of social services. So, I was wondering if there's any way to bring these up ahead of time, so that it could be, you know, put into our budget, or if it needs to be maybe for next year, so that, you know, those articles become for next year's budget? Because when you've set up a budget, and now you're asking for $2,000 or $4,000 or $3,000 to be pulled from different places, it doesn't even make sense that we're even asking or voting on whether or not we should be adding funds to something that's already been set. You know, why are we doing that?
Yeah. So, it sounds like, is there, that's a question for the Select Board, thank you. Eileen?
Yeah, this comes back to that social agency policy that we've been talking about, that the Select Board has been grappling with, and even what the definition of a social agency is. The Next Stage came to us with a petition to be added to the social agency fund, and that's why it came up here. I agree, it could have come up in a different way, but it didn't. So, right now, we're stuck with trying to fit them into the social agency fund, or possibly take some money from the general fund. That's where we're at right now. But I do agree that, in the future, it could be added to a line item.
Josh Laughlin, I'll let you jump in.
But we are required, Bryce, as I think you probably know. If an article is petitioned, we don't have the option of not placing it. We can place an article on the warrant without a petition if we are asked and we approve of it, but once it has been petitioned by 5% of the voters, we're required by statute to place it, so that's why it's here. But we do, that having been said, we talk about the social service budget every single year extensively, and have these conversations over and over again, and that's the opportunity to be a participant in that conversation.
So, just to remind everybody, what we're discussing right now is the amendment to Article 14. Swift, you have your hand up, do you want to speak in favor of the amendment or against?
Against.
Against, okay. If that's all right, unless there's somebody who hasn't, we'll go with Swift, because there's nobody who's saying, hey, it's the time for the proponents of the amendment to speak.
I just want to share a piece from my memory, and I hope the Select Board can remember this as well. My understanding is that these articles were added to this warning out of your respect for us, that it was not petitioned, it was, there was, it was, letters were sent to you saying we want to join, we want the, so to be added to the social service. Correct? And then?
And so, you should address it to Madam Moderator.
Sorry, Madam Moderator, thank you. Would you ask them that question?
Yeah. Would somebody be willing to answer Swift's questions? Yes, Eileen?
I will try to remember how this whole thing went down. So, in the course of discussing the social agency policy, we did get two requests from Grace Cottage and Next Stage, and in the process of discussing where those might fit, we started realizing that this policy really needs some work. And so, in the policy itself, it says that the Select Board can ask those agencies to petition the town. At that point, it becomes, as Josh said, it becomes a petitioned warrant article, and we're required to put it on the warrant.
However, you may be remembering from last year, Swift, that when the Equity and Inclusion Group brought some smaller agencies forward to be included in this, they were included without it having to be petitioned. We are able to do that. It was because, as Eileen highlighted, sort of the complexity of this question that we asked it to be petitioned.
Right. Madam Moderator, can I just ask?
Yes.
So, I guess what I wanted to clarify for us to know is that, my understanding is that the reason this was really put to us was, do we support these two agencies? Do we want the Select Board to decide how much money we're going to be giving? Do we support them? I think we're clearly support Next Stage. That seems like we've answered their question of saying, here, do you want us to support Next Stage? The way we have to support Next Stage right now is the social services agent, policy. It's kind of messed up, and we're working on it, but do you support Next Stage?
Swift, I'm sorry to interrupt, Swift, it's just that, at this point, we're dealing with the amendment, and the amendment has taken social service appropriation out.
Right, so I'm against the amendment to the amendment, and putting it back to the original amendment, and I'm in support of the original amendment.
So, I'm going to just have to restate that in a way, because actually, the amendment to the amendment was taken out, we are now just dealing with the amendment, and if we can take care of the amendment, we will then be able to go back to the original articles. Everybody following this? Hey, you know, we've come out of pandemic, and twice we've gone amendment to the amendment. I think we should be very proud of ourselves, so, good job, everybody.
Somebody must have bingo, don't they? I mean, come on, folks.
Yeah, bingo's happening. All right, it appears that we may be ready for a vote on the amendment, not on the article. Okay? So, we are voting right now on the amendment, shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a $2,000 appropriation to support Next Stage Arts Project, dot, dot, dot. All those in favor of this amendment, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and the amendment to Article 14 does not pass. We are now able to discuss Article 14 in its original glory. Ruby? I did not recognize you, I did not hear that. I said Ruby. Ruby?
It took a really long time to get here, sorry. My name is Ruby McAdoo, this is Hannah Pick. I'm the coordinator of Putney Community Cares, and this is the wonderful executive director of the Food Shelf. So, we're both here in support of the article. And as Keith referenced, he did not do anything until he had talked to both of us as representatives of the organization. We both serve boards, and so, some people on the boards are here, but we're coming here to this mic, as, in our roles as coordinator and executive director, we have done the math, just like all of you have, and splitting the pie is not going to kill us. But I think both Hannah and I would really urge the Select Board to do what you've said you're going to do, within the next year, figure it out. Like, figure out what the social service agency policy is, fix the broken thing, and then, next year, we will all, as a community, praise you.
Does it have a forum where we would?
Yes, and then, as Hannah reminded me, allowing that, there to be some forum or some public input, and specifically reaching out to the social service agencies that receive funding, to invite them to the table at that conversation.
All right, so that was an argument in favor of Article 14, no amendments needed. Does somebody wish to speak against Article 14? In the back.
This is Lauren Johnson, Madam Moderator. I'm speaking against the amendment. I'm speaking against the amendment in.
It's article, you're actually.
Article, excuse me.
That's okay.
In a specific way. We already voted the budget, and now we're going back and looking at little pieces of it here and there, and trying to fix things from the back. And it's important, in terms of coming up with a social services budget, which I support, and I like what Next Stage is doing, to look at it all at once, and not go back and look at it again later on. So, the obvious thing to do is to be voting who we want to include for next year into the budget, and then, the board can, Select Board can look at those things and make intelligent decisions based on what's actually going on, and without being second-guessed afterwards.
Great, thank you. That was an argument against Article 14. I'm looking at the Select Board just to see if there's anything they wish to add. Otherwise, I am going to look for an argument in favor of Article 14. Barry Stockwell. I'm going with people who we haven't heard as much from first.
I would like to urge you to vote in favor of Article 14. When Billy, John, Eric, and Chip and myself founded Next Stage 13 years ago, it was an arts organization, that's pretty much what we started at. We brought Keith on three years ago, and it's become so much more. What we, what he's done for us is to expand our reach beyond Southern Vermont. He's also done incredible things to integrate us into our community. And he was responding to a need, and yes, things can happen at the fire station, at the community center, but that puts that, those things on those plates, and those organizations are, tend to be maxed out. We invite those types of events at Next Stage. It's what I do, it's my job to make those events look easy and seamless. They're not. But I'm happy to take that on, and I would appreciate your support in letting us continue to be more and more part of this community. This works for us, I hope it works for you, and I hope you vote for this article. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm looking for somebody who hasn't spoken yet, who wishes to speak against Article 14? Against? Yes. Laura?
My name is Laura Campbell, and I think of Next Stage as an arts center, and so, I'm surprised to hear about the widening of the scope to include social services. But I know that, either as an arts center or as a social service provider, safety is really important. And in the last two or three years, correct me, the elevator has been out of order, and a good portion of our community, including myself, are elderly. The other thing is that it is dim and dark in the upstairs, there is no reading your program notes, there is no reading the material that's handed out at community meetings. There is real opportunity for falling and tripping, and, excuse me, and so, this is just, why have those needs not been addressed with whatever money has come in from ticket sales, or grants, or whatever? And my hope would be, I'm speaking against the article, because I want to see those needs met, and consideration shown for audiences. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, we've heard an argument against Article 14. Is there somebody who wishes to speak for Article 14? For, or a question, Lionel, and then to Jim.
Yes, I'm in favor of this, I urge everybody to vote for it. I'm delighted to see that at least two of the three organizations that'll be affected are happy to share their funds with this, and I'm delighted to think of the Next Stage as perhaps our new community center, maybe that's where we're going with this. And just want to remind everybody that we're also subsidizing a lot of organizations through our exemption from taxation. I believe it's $604,000 that we're foregoing in tax income per year, not just to organizations for other reasons as well. But I would really encourage the Select Board to include that in your thinking, when you're discussing the policy around social services, cash allotments. If you could please include the tax exemptions that are also being extended as another monetary value, and then we can have a really good conversation about the total amount of money that the town is allocating to itself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that was an argument in favor of Article 14. Do we have an argument against Article 14? Against? Question, Jim?
I think it's a simple question. Are we just assuming that?
I think it's a simple question. Are we just assuming that this is going to go into the top category, or the article doesn't speak to which category this goes into? How is that gonna be decided?
Let's ask the select board.
That is up to the select board's discretion.
Great. Okay, I'm wondering if we're able to move to a vote on Article 14? I'm seeing a lot of nodding and excitement. Yes, Josh?
I just want to clarify, that is up to the select board's discretion, but that will be discussed at an open meeting in which all participants are invited, or all townspeople are invited. So, when that's, keep an eye on your select board agendas, and you'll know when it's coming up.
And it seems like Jeanette White is very eager to get in a statement?
Thanks. I was just gonna make a comment. We've had a lot of discussion about what is a social service agency? What isn't a social service agency? Maybe we should change the title to "Community Service Agencies" instead of "Social Service Agencies." Just a comment.
Just a comment. Okay, great. It looks like we may be ready to vote. I'm going to read the article, Article 14 in its original glory. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize a social service appropriation to support Next Stage Arts Project for community blood drives, space sharing for Putney Food Co-op, and Vermont Council on Rural Development, hosting public offerings including the Osher Lecture Series, community meals, and other community services pursuant to the Putney Select Board policy on funding of social service agencies? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and Article 14 passes. We are now moving to Article 15, to transact any other town business that may legally come before the annual town meeting. I don't think I need a motion for this one. I believe that this is an open-ended, and because it's not warned, it's much broader. Ruby McAdo.
Hi, thank you, Madam Moderator. So I wear many hats. I am coming to you as Ruby McAdoo, involved in and interested in the school district and school service. I realize that you think that this is not related to the town. But I'm just, I think that this is the only place that I can come to invite you. I'm on the Leadership Council for Putney Central School. And we actually encourage and want everyone in our community, not just parents, to participate and be part of the Leadership Council. One of the many goals, but one of the primary goals of the Putney Central School Leadership Council is to gauge and be informed about community values, and to make sure that those community values are reflected in the school, including in the budget. So, this is my invitation formally, to invite you to come to a Leadership Council meeting. If you're interested, if you want to know about it, you can ask me. There's a Facebook page. I try to push it out to the community as much as possible. And then the second point that's related to the schools and the school, generally the school district, is that I served on the Independent Budget Review Committee this past year. This is an annual committee that exists, and it takes one person from each town to review and analyze the school budget, which we used to do in this space, but we don't anymore, to analyze that and create a report. And if you are interested in this report, it is online on the school district website. I can direct you to a link. I'll probably start pushing it out to our social media platforms in the next week or so. But if you have any interest in voting on the school budget, you must come to the School District Annual Meeting on the 21st of March at 7:00 PM at the BUHS gym. There is no proxy voting there. I do not believe, I don't know, Anne, if you know this, I don't think there will be a Zoom option to Zoom in. And so you must actually be there. There will be childcare. But please, be involved and informed about our school district. We no longer sit and have space here where we talk about it, but it has an impact on our town, and so I would just invite you all to be as informed as you can. And I'm sure Anne Beekman, who is a school district board member, sitting, can speak to you. I'd be happy to, as a Leadership Council member. But please be informed and come and be part of the school district participatory process.
Great. Is there any other town business?
Yes.
I was gonna go with Keith first, because I saw his hand. So Keith first.
I just would like to go on record that our elevator works. We are ADA compliant, and that we can't get funding from a lot of our sources without that ADA compliant. So, I'm happy to tour you around the building, and I'm happy to show you all of the safety concerns. But I did not want it to be left on the record that we don't have a working elevator. Next Stage is ADA compliant, and we're proud to be. And I'm happy to have a conversation with anybody who wants to talk about anything else around that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think next up is Emily Peyton.
Yes, I had meant to make a regular warning, but I didn't get to it, being kind of busy. But, so I have two articles I'd like to bring up from the floor. May I do so, Madam?
I'm wondering, because we also have two other non-binding, if whether we want to take these at the end of the other non-binding. So we're going to move into the next portion of the meeting. I may need a quick break. But when we get into non-binding business, and we could hear yours then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Laura Chapman.
Can I get my own microphone next time?
I don't know if we do that. It's kind of equal protection.
I would like to request at our next town meeting, we have a school board representative here just to give a small report, similar to our senators and state representatives.
Yeah, thank you. I know there was interest in doing that, and I think John Sessions was part of that. Sue Coakley.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And I wanted to speak to the audience here. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'm on the Planning Commission. We're writing an updated 2023 town plan for the next five to eight years that will bring funding to the town through state and federal sources, and meet a number of state requirements. But we're also building it to meet the aspiration, needs, and desires of this community. And for the first time, the Planning Commission is engaging in a series of community meetings to talk about the different sections of the town plan as we're writing them. And we hope you will come join us for those meetings. On the chairs, you will see this notice of our community meeting number two, which is March 22nd at Next Stage. It will also be virtually, and done better this time with Zoom than meeting number one. We'll be addressing housing, transportation, and energy at that meeting. And we do hope you'll come and be part of that conversation. In April, we will address natural resources, land use, and resilience. In May, we'll talk about economic development and municipal facilities and services. And then in June, we'll talk about an implementation plan. And in July, we'll talk about the whole plan, and be ready for hearings in August, September, and October. So, they'll all be at Next Stage, and we hope you'll come. Or if you can't come in person, please attend virtually. And on the town website, you will see links to draft materials, and how to provide comments in writing. So, thank you for your attention, and I look forward to seeing you or hearing from you.
Great, thank you. Let's move on to the non-binding, which these next two items are for discussion purposes only. They are non-binding. Number A, letter A. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase from Putney Community Center Lot 070340, located at 39 Sand Hill Road, known as Cooper Field, containing approximately 10.2 acres, for a sum not to exceed the assessed value of The source of funding to be determined and use of the property to be subject to such terms and conditions as the select board may deem appropriate. Is somebody on the select board going to describe this? And explain why it's in front of the voters?
Do we need a motion, or?
Are we gonna go with a motion in second for non-binding? Okay.
So moved.
So moved. And may I have a second on the floor? Jordi Heller? And so we have, although I don't want to get people confused that we're moving into a motion that you can vote on, we're having a discussion. So, anyway, if somebody on the select board could explain why we are considering item A.
Sorry, I'm confused, Meg. Why would we not? We typically vote on non-binding articles. Why would we not vote on this? And we're asking, it's phrased as an article that's asking the voters to answer a question.
That's- Okay, what do you think? All right, I am overruled on that one. So now the motion is on the table, that question, number A. And is there somebody who wishes to explain letter A's, reason why it's in front of people?
Do we still have somebody from Putney Community Cares here? Or, I mean, Putney Community Center. I'm sorry. Is Nancy here? Nancy, would you be able to speak to this?
The Putney Community Center, which was founded in 1925, has owned Cooper Field. It was gifted to the Putney Community Center in 1930. So, we've owned the property since then. Back in the day when Harris Coombs had the men's softball league, it was a very active area. Many people here have, no doubt, played softball on that field. But after, sadly, Harris is no longer with us, the field has been used in informal ways. The past couple of years, Next Stage has had bandwagon, some of their bandwagon concerts there. A couple of individuals have had softball events, but really, the field hasn't been used. And the community center looked into getting insurance, and we can't. I mean, it's not even a question of the expense, which would be prohibitive. We can't even get it. Our agent talked to everybody that she could find, and nobody will touch it. So, it's a space that the town could use. Furthermore, the town's water supply is on that property. It makes all the sense in the world for the town to own it. The community center has an obligation, through its bylaws and articles of association, to unite the community through educational and recreational activities, which we can't do, because we can't get insurance. So, we came to the select board with the proposal that the community center would be willing to sell the property to the town at the assessed value, which is far under market rate, as a potential recreational resource that the town could develop in the future, in ways that would meet the needs of the citizens who have requested recreational areas. So I think that's the motivation for doing this.
Great, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions about A? Yes, Heather.
I think my question is, is point of education maybe in multiple parts. Why is it uninsurable? Does that uninsurable property become uninsurable per the town? And if the town chooses to use it as public recreation, if it's uninsurable, how do we do that?
Great question. Is that something, Nancy, you wish to answer, or the select board?
I think it's not that the property is uninsurable. It's uninsurable from the community for the purpose of a softball field. And my understanding with, I can't verify this at the moment, but my understanding is that as a municipality, we would have the opportunity to ensure it because of the nature of it, and the nature of it being a municipality.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead. Emily Peyton.
If the town were to get this property, would the town be limited to only recreational instances? And I happen to be pretty focused and interested in the town increasing its food production capacity. So I'm looking at the places where we could put in, there's a certain type of dug-in greenhouse where we could be growing citrus, because it seems to me that this would be absolutely inappropriate for so many reasons. But my question is, would it have to only be used for recreational, or would you have the latitude to use it for anything we need?
Is there somebody on the select board who can answer Emily's question?
I'm not sure I can answer it definitively, but are there deed restrictions on the property right now, Nancy? Sorry, I need to, unless Josh-
My answer would be that the most important aspect of it in staying with the intent that it was initially donated to the community center would be that it would support the citizens of the town in endeavors related to recreation and otherwise. I can imagine food production could easily fall within that category, not necessarily recreationally, but in being meaningful to the town. So, my feeling, as somebody who's not gonna be here sitting making the decisions, would be, I think, we can imagine all sorts of things it could be used for as long as it benefits the town.
Yeah, my name's Chris Couturier. I'm on the community center board. And that's about my understanding too. So that would be part of a negotiation upon the sale. So at the moment, there are no deed restrictions on the property that we know of, and we've done a little bit of research into that. But, you know, as sort of the responsibility of the community center board to sort of keep with the spirit and the responsibility that was there when it was initially donated, that we would try to maintain that. But it's pretty broad. You know, they use terms like, you know, recreation, education, citizenship, those kinds of broad terms. So, it would be up to the select board as to how they would interpret that, and up to the community center as to whether they would try to put any restrictions on it at the time of the sale, but that would be a negotiation.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Tom? Tom is asking, why is this non-binding? And actually, I'm glad you're asking that, Tom, because it also says for discussion purposes. So, is there a reason why, that you could explain why it's on this part of the warrant?
Well, for one thing, we don't have a funding source, so we couldn't definitively say where the money would be coming from. And because it's a negotiation between the select board and the community center, a binding resolution would bind our hands to some extent. What we did, the reason we put it on the warrant was because we wanted to get a sense of the community, whether this was a good idea or not.
So can I ask a question based on that? Because it said, for discussion purposes only, I wasn't sure you wanted to vote. Do you want a vote?
Yes, we want to vote. And I'm not sure. I think that was trying to clarify that they were non-binding and not necessarily meaning that we didn't want to vote.
Got it. All right, thank you. That's helpful, and we'll put that for the second one as well. I have several hands up way in the back. I don't think you've spoken before.
Hi, my name's Libby, and I'm the program coordinator for the rec league here in town. And we've had some lengthy discussions about where we can have recreation services for our youth and for adults. And currently, we share space gratefully with Putney Central School, and have for a really long time. And that poses some scheduling conflicts, and quite a few other conflicts. And we are thinking that as a rec league, it would be really nice to have that space for children to use. We could have soccer fields, we could have basketball court. At our future Putney meetings, people were talking about wanting a pickleball court. So there's kind of unlimited options to use that space for benches for people to sit. And that was another thing that people really seemed concerned about, was having space outside for people to gather, whether it's- whether it's for recreation or just saying hi to a friend. And so that's one thing that we have discussed in length of where we can have those soccer games and stuff for kids and for everyone else. And this was just a thought that we had. And we want to share that with the community, that we support this. And hopefully, we can work together to create a space like that.
Great, thank you. So we're hearing a lot of arguments in favor of, I'm calling it item A. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against item A? Are we ready to move to a vote? Sue Cokely and Ann has also, has her hand up. So we'll go Sue Cokely, and then we'll go to Ann.
Madam Moderator, I mainly have a question. So if we did approve this, and the select board was able to find the money and reach terms with the community center, then they would be able to go ahead and purchase the property outright, and we would not have to come back and vote on it again. Is that correct?
A great question. What do you say, select board?
So I've been reminded that nodding doesn't count. So, so yes, select board has the authority to secure lands at any time of the year. So we don't have to bring this back to the town. And that's why we're bringing it up now.
Great. Does that answer your question? Great. And Ann, you've been waiting patiently.
Hi, Ann Carey. I just want to say that this is part of the town well source protection area, which the select board already knows as Water Commissioners. And this recreation idea would be perfect. It's, it abuts, this area abuts the town well. That area is forested. The steep slopes are forested. That really helps with the cleaning up the water. And to keep that areas, the recreational areas was intended by the original donor back in the day, I think would just be wonderful. So I'm definitely for this.
Great. Well, it looks like the select board wants a vote. And I have a sense that we're ready to move to a vote. So let me read the language. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to purchase from Putney Community Center Lot 070340, located at 39 Sand Hill Road, known as Cooper Field, containing approximately 10.2 acres for a sum not to exceed the assessed value of $147,900? The source of funding to be determined and use of the property to be subject to such terms and conditions as the select board may deem appropriate. All those in favor of item A, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Item A passes. We will now move to the second non-binding issue. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to create a town recreational board to be governed by a board of trustees elected at the annual town meeting commencing in March 2024, to consist of not less than five, but not more than seven trustees with staggered terms up to three years? May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Can I get a second from the floor? And is it Melanie Fletcher? We have a second. It has been moved in second for the second non-binding item. If it's all right, I will not read it again, but I will before we vote. It is in front of the voters. Are there any explanations? Does somebody want to speak on behalf? And in the back, yes.
Hi again. Is it okay if I read a statement that we wrote as a rec league board?
Is it Libby?
Yes, Libby North.
Libby North, thank you.
So the Putney Rec League Board of Directors and I got together, and we wrote this letter. The Putney Rec League's mission has always been to support youth and families in our community, providing low to no cost opportunities for our kids to stay healthy and active and instill a lifelong love and appreciation of teamwork and support. The Putney Rec League is a small nonprofit organization run primarily on volunteer engagement. We operate primarily on revenue generated through fundraising, such as our snack shack, which is out on the soccer field here, and our annual soccer tournament. I'm just going to add a little note. We have done other fundraisers too, and we pretty much break even every time. It takes a lot to do a big event like that to raise funds. These endeavors require a lot of effort and rely heavily on volunteer involvement. The creation of a Parks and Rec organization under the town's umbrella would allow the Putney Rec League to thrive and expand beyond our current limitations. The benefits we see are consistent annual funding through the town's budget, greater and easier access to grant funding, opportunities for growth, including adult sports programming, opportunities for community partnerships, structures and supports to cultivate greater volunteer involvement, potential opportunities for more facilities and playing fields, and opportunities to strengthen our existing youth programming through stronger resources for coaching, equipment, and uniforms.
Great. And you'll be around in case people have some questions?
Yes.
Great. Are there any questions about this recreational board? Yes, Lionel.
Yeah, I'd just like to know where the, where the boundary is between town and not town. So my understanding is the Putney Rec League is a nonprofit, not a, not a town organization, although there's been a lot, over the years, there's been a lot of partnering, obviously, because it's all, we're all rowing in the same boat. But this sounds like a fairly sophisticated new organization that we're talking about with a substantial board of trustees and then members as well. Is this a town organization? And are there any costs or other things that we should be aware of before we indicate our opinion?
Great, thank you for that question. Looks like we have an answer coming from Karen.
I don't know where the boundaries are, Lionel, because there's nothing in writing. What I can say is, right now, the town, in our general fund budget, we pay for a rec director, who is Libby North. We also pay a concession person every month. And we also put insurance, liability insurance, on their fundraiser at Landmark College. At one point, what I can surmise is the rec league was its own. And it included the pool. They took care of the pool. So the town has the pool back, and I can presume it's for insurance purposes because that organization cannot get the insurance. The library also has a board of trustees. So they were a private library. And then they came over as a public library. We make the appropriation to the library, they're town employees. So what I'm envisioning is this rec league will be like the library, but they'll be focused on sports for the community. And we can support them through grants much quicker and much larger as a town board versus them being on their own.
And Peg Alden?
Yeah, I would like to say, I just want to make sure that we're talking about sports and recreation. We're not just exclusively sports. And also that I, I as a citizen, am super interested in making sure that we're talking about recreation across generationally, not just for the kids.
Great. And Josh wants to also add something, and then I'll go to the floor with Janice.
I just want to say, Lionel, you know, the, the article reads such that it would be to authorize the Putney to create a town recreational board. So I, again, I won't be here, but I think the, the idea would be to get a committed group of people who want to explore. And I think this falls well into, you know, what we've recently been talking about as far as future Putney, et cetera. What, what does a recreational board do? What does the creation of it entail? What are the boundaries, et cetera? But I think that would all fall within the, the language of creating a board.
Great. So it looks like, are we starting to move to a vote? I have two hands up. I'll go with Jeanette Ruby. Oh, I have three hands up, Bryce. First to Jeanette.
I'm sorry to prolong the agony here, but I, the VCRD process just went through, we just went through that whole process. And one of the three groups that came out of that, and I've been attending that group, was to look at community space, community centers, whatever. And at the first meeting of that group at the Next Stage, there were maybe, I don't know, 60 or 70 people in that, in that group. And while we talked about community spaces, it was very clear that people wanted to include outdoor recreational spaces, inventorying them, what do we have? What are we missing? And that there was a great deal of interest in that. And in fact, I think Libby and I both kind of pushed the idea of a town rec league. And people were responsive. So I think it's not just the people that are here, but there were probably 60 or 70 people at that meeting who were very clear that in talking about community spaces, we needed to look at also recreation and outdoor for kids and adults.
Great, thank you. I think Ruby had her hand up, and then Bryce, and then Janice.
Hi, Ruby McAdoo. So I am here with the hat on of Putney Pool Champion. I am one of many community members who step up and support Karen specifically, but help to make sure that the Putney Pool is a vibrant place. And to speak to something that Peg said, which I think is very important, in the past year, we've, we've, there's been a push to make sure that there were events and things at the pool for older adults or not for just children. So the reason I'm here is to speak in support of this non-binding article. And in large part, because as I've stepped up and supported the Putney Pool and supported Karen, I've seen how much I think Karen would appreciate a rec league. And I, I mean, it would be really, really transformative to the work of the town, of the town manager, of Karen, but also to us as community members. I think that it, us voting for this and pushing it forward is really critical. So I'm in support.
Great. So we've heard lots and lots of arguments in favor of non-binding item B. Is there anybody who wishes to speak against? Against, yes. Thank you. It's better to have pros and cons.
Daniel Hardigan, madam moderator. Sounds like a great idea. I'm all in favor of outdoor rec, and we need it in Putney. However, I don't like the expansion of government. We have a lot of committees. We've expanded the select board. And I think it's confusing. There's too much to keep track of. I think we should be cautious in creating another committee with more people. And, you know, I'm in favor of smaller government.
Great, thank you very much for an argument against non-binding item B. Is there somebody who wishes to speak in favor? Does it look in favor, a question? Okay. Bryce, did you have a question first?
Hi, Bryce Hodgson. I had, I just had a brief question because I was confused. By creating this board, would that mean that we're absorbing Libby's group? And she could theoretically be on our board? Or would it be two separate boards where they would be private, and then the town would have its own board?
Great question. Great question. Libby, do you want to answer that, or should we take it to the select board? Select board? Or Karen?
Okay, Bryce, so Libby's already technically a town employee because we pay her, although she's on a board of trustees. It's a little complicated. So what I'm envisioning is like a Parks and Recreation Board Department. It's going to be town, and it will be in, eventually, in the budget if this is favored for a lot of different reasons. Because they struggle already to get funding. They're short-staffed sometimes. I don't have a problem working with the board of trustees because I do it with the library. So it's, it's going to mirror that model. So not, not much is going to change. It will be a town department. And the other thing too about the Parks and Rec is what I've been hearing from this community is there's not a lot of public play areas for kids that are not in school. This, this piece of property can solve that.
Okay, it's, it's reaching the four o'clock hour, so I'm wondering if we're ready to speak, for the voters to vote on this issue? Okay, I'm getting some thumbs up. So let me read it out loud. Shall the voters of the town of Putney authorize the select board to create a town recreational board to be governed by a board of trustees elected at the annual town meeting commencing in March 2024, to consist of not less than five, but not more than seven trustees with staggered terms up to three years? All those in favor of item B, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes have it, and the nay was heard. Very important. We want to have disagreement here. Prove Tokville wrong. This is all I have. I know Emily Peyton says that she has two items.
Yes, please.
Can I have the floor?
Thank you. I have an enormous concern that is going to affect all of us. And the concern is around our right to choose for our bodies and what's going on with the WHO treaty. Now, I know we don't usually get involved with large national and international objects and things that are happening. However, that being said, if it is signed by our president, then we will be surrendering our national and local and personal sovereignty to the WHO.
And just to interrupt, is this the world, when you say WHO, are you talking about the WHO?
The WHO, yes, sorry.
And do you want to explain what that acronym is?
The World Health Organization.
Thank you.
And the World Health Organization is seeking to have a treaty of, I think it's 198 countries, agree that they will run any future pandemics. They will be allowed to dictate what types of medications the populations of countries will take, and they can enforce them with NATO troops, which is just a horrendous overreach, in my view. I really am a champion of our individual and personal rights as, as a constitution. So I had put out a, a resolution that I'm hoping that the people of Putney will support because our, we need to stand up for our constitution, let our elected people know that we like it and want it.
So I'm, I'm having a bit of a procedural just complexity because I, I want to make sure that the actual language of the resolution is presented to the voters. We don't, it appears we do not have a written, something to distribute amongst the voters. Is that correct?
Right, but I, I will read what I have if you are willing, madam, for me to do so.
Does that sound all right, parliamentarian? Tom, if we, we won't have anything in writing, we'll just have a, read the resolution. Yes, great.
But it will go in writing once, if it's passed. So it's, it's, it says, shall the voters of Putney direct their elected officials legislative and senatorial statewide and nationwide to denounce the WHO treaty now poised to override our personal and national sovereignty? And furthermore, the people of Putney depend on their elected officials to defend and protect our God-directed constitutional rights as described in the U.S. and Vermont Constitution. Therefore, in light of the WHO treaty now on, about to be Therefore, in light of the WHO treaty, now on, about to be with Biden's anticipated signature, a treaty that would surrender personal, state, and national sovereignty to the WHO, would have, would be unnatural, and would be inappropriate, I'm skipping some to make it shorter, and would violate the spirit of our Constitution. And we, the people of Putney, expect our elected officials to refute its capacity to do so.
So that's a motion for a resolution. I need a second. Is there anybody who's going to give a second? And could you say your name, sir?
Daniel Hardigan.
Daniel?
Hardigan.
Hardigan. So we have a motion and a second. The resolution is in front of the people. And, and Emily, are you able to give a copy to Kim for the minutes?
Yes.
Great. I'll just move right to a vote on that. All those in favor of this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. The nays have it, and that resolution does not pass.
Okay. I have a second one, please.
Okay.
So this was, shall the voters of Putney urge the, the legislature to direct funding and attention to increasing local food production as a means to improve our standing in environmental and economic conditions?
Great. So we have a, a resolution has been moved. Do we have a second? Janice Baldwin has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye. Oh, sorry, can we hear the, can we hear it one more time, Emily?
Oh, well, let's see. Shall the voters of Putney urge our legislators to direct all forms of support, financial and otherwise, to expand our local food production, to, to, what was the verb I used? To deal with, to, to help with coming economic and environment conditions, and to improve outcomes that we expect economically. I can't do it twice the same way, sorry.
Okay, so, yes, Jeanette White.
Sorry to speak again, but I, I actually support the concept of this, but because it was different both times, and I'm not exactly sure what, I, I would have appreciated it, Emily, if it had been written so that we could have seen it, because I, I do support the concept of, of our food security. And in fact, with the first one, I don't know enough about what that was about, so I didn't even vote on it, because I don't, it wasn't written, I couldn't look at it. So I, I would just appreciate if people bring resolutions to the town meeting, that they'd be in writing somehow, even if they don't make it into the town report.
Yeah. And we are running into a problem with having two different iterations of the resolution. I'm a little bit stuck how we can vote.
Okay, I, I did write it down, and I could follow it more exactly, I just didn't read it the second time.
I'm looking at the parliamentarian, what do you think?
People can present whatever they want, but it's getting late.
People can present whatever they want, but it is getting late. So I'm going to move, then, to a vote on the second resolution. All those in favor of the second resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
I honestly couldn't tell you.
Do a division.
Division. I heard that word, division. It just takes one person. So division means we will now use hands, and I'll need the select board, each, if you could all count, of how many people come up on each side. So all those in favor of the second resolution, please indicate by saying aye. And raise your hands, and hold them there, so that the select board can count. Did you get a number?
Raise your hands higher.
We need you to, I know it's late, if you want to...
Stand up.
Move around a little. You, you guys have a number? Okay, great. And so you can now put your hands down, and it was only Putney voters. And those who, all those who wish to vote against the resolution, please indicate by raising your hand.
Ten.
Ten? So it appears that the ayes have it, is that correct? And the ayes have it, which means the resolution, and the language of which we need, in order to be recorded in the minutes, that resolution did pass. All right, I think I just need a motion to adjourn. Wait a minute.
I have a question.
Peg.
How can we vote on a resolution that we don't have language for? I'm confused about that.
That would hardly be called the will of the people problem. We have to follow the will of the people. The people can rebuke me for calling for that resolution as having passed, you certainly may. We'll go through a long procedural element.
I won't do it again.
Your choice?
Madam Moderator, thank you very much for your very difficult service.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you to Tom Aronberg. Yes, two amendments to the second. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Yes? And do we have a second? Ann Fine? Okay, the first one was Heather, and the second one was Ann Fine.
Ann Carey.
Ann, Ann Carey, I'm sorry. And so all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It appro, okay, anybody opposed? It appears the ayes have it. Bye, everybody. 166 people attended.